Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the -- I'd like to call this meeting to order for the House of Housing and Community Services of Lane County Board of Commissioners meeting. And then, good morning, Commissioner Harrison. Looks like we've got a bunch of people. Good morning, Larry Jacob and Vesoski. Okay, so, do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, so our next order of business is public comment, and it looks like we have six people to make comments. So, first person would be Susan.
My name is Susan Vian. I work at Shelter Care. And Shelter Care has partnered with Housing and Community Services Agency for many years, going back into the 1970s and 1980s, and it's always been a constructive partnership. They own several of our buildings that we provide services in, and it's kind of critical to our mission in terms of serving the community to have a housing partner like HACSA has been. When Jacob Fox came to join HACSA in the summer of August 2013, I had to get past my own denial that Larry would ever leave, because working with Larry has been a real treat. But I will say that Jacob brought a lot of skills, perspectives, and experiences to Housing and Community Services Agency because of his experience in the state, his connections in the state, and his experiences in Portland, and it has been a real gift to have him with those perspectives, organizationally, and also statewide in networking in our community. Further, I really would support your moving him into the position without an additional process, and this is why. I think continuity is absolutely critical, and I think we've already established relationships with him. We've been working with him now for the last year and a half, and it can -- those relationships are so important to having our operation move smoothly that we expected to be working with him into the future and would like to have that opportunity. So, I'm here to testify that using the process of bringing someone on, training them into the position, and then giving them the position is a good process. It's one that sponsors use, it's one that Shelter Care is using, and it really allows for smooth transitions, and I think that's what we need, especially in these critical areas of housing services. That's my comment. Thank you.
And then we have Hal.
Hello. My name is Hal Dillon. I've worked with HACSA in the Energy Services Division since 2006. I'm an energy auditor-inspector, and I was asked to share some of my thoughts about Jacob Fox. When Jacob first came on about a year and a half ago, he actually moved into the office right across from my office and my coworker's office, and so I got to know him a little bit just in the hall chatting and stuff, and I found him to be personable, friendly, a good sense of humor, and I had a good feeling about having him come onboard, because I thought I understood that there was a chance he may take over the executive position. So, I had a good feeling about him. And since then, I'm in the Energy Services Division, which is also known as the Weatherization Department, and he has taken an active oversight role with the weatherization, which has been good to, from my perspective, to feel like we're more a part of the HACSA structure instead of a separate entity. And he was responsible, to some extent, for hiring a new director, Steve Joel, of the Weatherization Department, and Steve has been really good for weatherization. He's brought a lot of experience and enthusiasm. He has a lot of contacts throughout the state, so it's been really good, from my perspective, for the Energy Services Division to have Steve come onboard, and Jacob had a lot to do with that, I think. He also, it's my understanding, that he communicates regularly with Steve and establishes goals for our department and how well we're meeting those goals, and I also think that's a really good development. I've seen him -- I don't have much of a perspective of the agency as a whole, but I've seen some investments in our Information Services Department, some of our vehicles, the maintenance vehicles. Some of them are getting pretty old, and we've now got some new ones, and some new personnel that seems to have been helpful. So, anyway, I appreciate this opportunity to share my thoughts. I like to think that Jacob's doing a great job, and we should keep him around. Thank you.
Okay, now we have Mira Gaddis.
My name is Mira Gaddis. I'm the Resident Services Supervisor at HACSA, and I have a couple of other perspectives as well. I've been at other agencies going through kind of transition, and I agree with Susan that the continuity that appointing Jake would bring to the agency, I think it's important at this point. We've been through a lot of transitions in the last couple of years, and actually, some of the more recent ones are because of Jacob. I think he has brought a fresh outside perspective to the agency, which I think in the past we've looked for. You know, there was discussion in the past of going outside to look for an executive director, and I think the things that that perspective brings, we have in Jacob, I think Susan and Larry in the board order outlined some of his past experiences that I think have come into the agency and already shown us that Jacob has a fresh outlook that's going to move us forward with the agency. I'm also a past mediator, so you'll hear me talk a lot about relationship, and one of the things that's been really great about Jacob, and I think would make him a good executive director, he's been a great deputy director, but I think having him be the person who continues to build the relationships of the community that he's already built with Cornerstone, Shelter Care, sponsors, I think that that's really important, and to have that continuity and the global perspective that he has, I think are really good qualities in an executive director. And as a staff person, I have seen him bring a really good understanding of the population we serve. His language around moving us towards a customer service model and working with the community, I think, has been exponential in kind of changing the internal perspective that staff has and how they work, and to have that maintained, I think, is really important. He's, you know, I'm not a real -- I'm not really good at new people, so I, of course, had my first six months of like, "What's he doing here? What are all these changes he's making?" But I'm fully onboard now. I think that some of the things he's done in creating new teams and looking at staff perspective has been really good for the agency, and I think as an executive director, he would continue to grow that and continue to make the changes in both HACSA and in the way we interact with the community, so. Thank you.
Okay, and so now I have, let's see, Paul Solomon? You're passing? Oh, okay. And I can't. Is it Richard?
Yes. Richard, for me. I'll wave my testimony.
Oh, really? Okay. And then there's a Richard, another Richard. Herman.
Good morning. Well, my name is Richard Herman. I'm the Executive Director of Cornerstone Community Housing. We were formerly Metropolitan Affordable Housing, and so the agency's been in existence for 22 years, and I've been with them for the last 12. But I'm here in strong support of Jacob Fox as the Executive Director of HACSA, and I've had the opportunity to work with Jacob when he first came, and that was in early, the summer of 2013, and Betsy Hunter was who I worked with before that, and it was really critical that we had Jacob to continue with the Glenwood project, very complex project, requiring some real experience and sophistication about finance and development, and Jacob brought that to the table. Beyond Glenwood, HACSA is very active in developing other very complex real estate transactions in their pipeline, and it really needs someone with his level of experience to navigate through that pre-development and construction phases. HACSA and Cornerstone have some other exciting partnerships that we're working on together, and one example is Cornerstone, along with other agencies as partners, we got a grant from the Meyer Memorial Trust to do work around advocacy for affordable housing, and Jacob and Larry have been partners in that since the outset, and we're really building a powerful campaign that's going to really help the community understand the critical need for affordable housing and the role it plays in the larger economy. Jacob has really been a great addition to the affordable housing leadership in the community. I know he's active on the Poverty and Homelessness Board, the Lane Workforce Partnership Board, the Housing Policy Board, and he's been very active in the whole initiative to end homelessness for veterans, obviously a very important initiative. So, as someone who's nearing the end of my career in housing development, I know the importance of succession planning, something we're starting to do, and as Susan said, it's really a great transition when you can have someone there for a time to help with that transition, and so I think the Board of Commissioners was really wise in bringing Jacob to Lane County early on, and I think this question about advertising and interviewing lots of people, I don't know what better interview process you can have than, rather than hypothetical situations or some, what would you do if you were faced with this kind of problem? In the last year and a half, Jacob has faced lots of problems and proved himself, and also, again, building his collaborations. So, I would encourage you to adopt this resolution before you, and I think it's also somewhat carrying on the legacy that Larry has of really building high-quality affordable housing communities, his legacy of early on forming partnerships and collaborations with other agencies and creating a platform that's so important to all the social service agencies to deliver their programs. Thank you.
All right, so then we're going to move on. Are there any, is there anybody else that would like to speak before we move on? Okay, then, we move on to Commissioner's response to these comments and your other issues. Christian.
I'd just like to express regret that Richard Green and Paul Solomon declined to speak, but I can guess what they might have to say.
Yeah. Anybody else? All right. Do we have any emergency business? No? So, we're then to the consent calendar. We have two items, and one is approval of the minutes for 10/28/2014, and two, 10/15.
Second of them?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes have been approved, and then we move on to the next consent item, Order 150303018, out of approving a fair housing resolution for the Bascom Village Phase Two Affordable Housing Development.
Move for both.
Is that wrong?
No, you're doing both.
Same time? Oh, okay. All in favor?
You're the boss. You do what you say.
Yeah, all in favor for the Bascom Village. All right, okay. Okay, so now we're going to move on to some administration, and in the matter of authorizing the formation of Bascom Village II LLC and authorizing development and financing of the Bascom Village Phase Two Affordable Housing Development, and I believe Steve Oakes is going to talk.
Oh, good morning. I'm Steve Oakes, the Development Director for HACSA, and I wanted to take this opportunity to kind of update you also on how Bascom Phase Two is going and how the first phase is going. So, Bascom Village Phase One is the part of St. Minson DePaul's building, and they're probably about 60% to 70% construction, and if you haven't been out there, it's looking great. They have a lot of the, a lot of the houses are dried-in or departments, and you can really see the transition they were hoping to get from the neighborhood is looking really good, and it also gives you a great sense of what Phase Two is going to look like, because we're basically replicating what they're doing with a two-story-long park view and then higher buildings towards the back. They do have a big community center out there also that won't be on our side, but so I encourage you, if you have a chance, to drive by there, take a look at it. It's really nice to see all the activity out there and it coming to, after the years of planning, coming to fruition, so. I'd also offer, if any of you are interested, we could definitely get a tour of Phase One right now through St. Minson DePaul. They'd be happy to give one if any of you are interested. I'd offer that up to get ahold of me. And moving on to Bascom Village Phase Two, it's coming together rather quickly now. We're getting the financing in order, and the city's prepared to give us the land bank site, and so this board order is kind of that enabling action. It's the normal course of action we've, we need to go through to get the financing closed, which we hope to do by the end of May, and then construction would begin in early June timeframe. And so this, this board order you see is kind of the same authorization that you need for any tax credit project, and you've seen in previous tax credit projects also. It basically enables HACSA to take control of the land bank site and then enter into necessary agreements to finance and develop Phase Two, which we're doing in partnering with Wells Fargo Bank. Yeah, so if you have questions about the board order or the project in general, I'd be glad to answer those at this time.
Christian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, during this process, it was my understanding that there was a, lack of a better word, a site by LTD about a quarter mile away. Since that time, they've moved it. Is that correct? Is it still a quarter mile away, or is it now? I think it's more than a mile away, isn't it? Is that correct?
No, actually, it's right at the site now.
It is at the site now.
They moved this, they moved this stop just right next to the site on County Farm Road, and so we're going to be providing direct pedestrian access to that site.
Just originally, when that, when we were discussing this in Housing Policy Board, there was talk that that would be eliminated, and then that if folks are living there and they need transit, they literally have to walk a mile, but that's good news, because, you know, and I think the trends sometimes show that in some of the four block housing complexes, I know you can't fight them up, that it's like 1.2 cars per family, and so it's important, I think, having the transit available is very important. So, that's very good news. I'm glad to hear that. That puts my heart a little bit more at ease than what was originally thought of from the design piece from the very beginning, so thank you very much.
Do you want to hear another question? Christian.
Thank you. Larry, we've been working on that project for a long time. I remember knocking on your door, right in the early phases, and a lot of discussion was on. I remember meeting you out at the site.
Before it was, before a shovel had entered the site. And obviously, we had a great deal of discussion and great discussions, but regarding public transit, regarding sidewalks, regarding the mix with the existing housing, and I think we've done a superb job all along. And St. Minson DePaul's done a superb job of answering all of the questions that came through, all of those meetings at Churchill High School, long, long meetings at Churchill High School. But, well, we really heard just about every, every condition that possibly could have existed, and I think, once again, I'm really pleased with the way you all have handled it, the way St. Minson DePaul handled it, and the partnership has been formed there. It's an absolutely necessary step in our, in what used to be called our housing ladder. I think some people someplace, maybe being one of them, still calls it a housing ladder, but it's an important step, and the families that will live there, it's just, once again, invaluable. Thank you very much for all the work you've turned in, and thank you. I'm looking forward to completing the project, and certainly the additional housing stuff that is so badly needed in this community. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I have an approval order, 15-3-03-28, matter of authorizing the formation of Bascom Village II, an authorization development of financing of the Bascom Village, Phase Two Affordable Housing Development.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, so now we're going to move on to Order 150303H, in the matter of appointing Jacob Fox to be the next Executive Director of the Housing and Community Services Agency of Lane County. And then Larry.
Morning, everyone. So, you all know I'm scheduled to retire now in less than four months. It's going really quickly, and as you also know, it's really important for me, after 35 years, to leave HACSA in a good place, and you also know that I strongly would recommend that you appoint Jacob Fox as the next HACSA Executive Director. He's been here for a little over a year and a half. He has more than met my expectations. He's done an outstanding job, as you've heard people talk about it. He's made just very important connections with our community partners internally. He's done a terrific job in beginning to shape the future of the organization, and frankly, I don't have the energy to do that anymore, and Jacob certainly does, and I don't know what more I can say. You saw my memo and the board order, so I'd certainly be glad to answer any questions you have or talk about referring to.
Do you have any questions?
I just want to say, I want to echo what other people already said, the process of bringing Jacob in and having him around so we can get to know him and he can get to know us, and for him to say, "Yeah, I want to stick around," I think is really important and really, really useful, and I'm so grateful for what you and Dorothy did, and that's it. I'm just, I'm grateful for what you've done. I remember being on the board years ago, when it was way in the distance of, "You have to do this," and I was wondering, "How do you do that?" And you've done it really, really well. The only question, I guess, going forward is, how are we keeping here? So, thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you. I'd like to wholeheartedly add on to what the public testimony was, the missing public testimony was. You know, I've had a chance to work with Jacob here in town, but I've also had a chance to observe his work from his previous job in Portland, and some of the work that Jacob did up there was he helped form and build the Bud Clark Center, excuse me. And if you don't know what that is, it's downtown where the rescue mission used to be, right at the bottom of Burnside and Broadway, and it's a five-story or four-story facility that includes day use for homeless folks as well as residential, for both, it includes some wetback residential on the upper floor, so it really is a well-rounded facility that's really doing a superb job, and the location that it really hits right on. But significantly, in speaking to folk who work with Jacob up there, they are jealous, it can be, that we now have Jacob, and it's, you know, it really is a strong asset for people that Jacob's been in the past for our community, look forward to working with him for many years to come, and look forward to working with you also for many years to come, because I know you're not really excited. You're going to echo around. One last thing is, I saw Commissioner Stewart look at me when I said Churchill High School and we did a vote for Churchill High School.
Thank you, Chair. Larry, I want to thank you specifically, remembering we hired you to replace Chris in the direction from the Housing Board at that time was to have a succession plan put into place, and you've done, not only done a stellar job with strategic planning and guiding this organization, but you also have done distinctly that. You took that job seriously and have put in a succession plan, which, you know, you're presenting to us today to support, and so I appreciate the great work that you've done. I also wanted to add that I received a couple of the correspondences from individuals. I just wanted to share that I received a support letter from Commissioner Mick Hish from the City of Portland, supporting Jacob and his past work that he did in Portland, and that I also shared that I received a support plug from Christina Payne, the Director of Workforce Partnership, once again, kind of explaining the great connections and ties that Jacob is forming in the community, certainly on the Workforce Partnership Board, so it's not all just focused on how he's performing. He's active in really a lot of items and infor, of the work that he does, and a great contributor. I bet that seeing him in action at our meeting last week, he patted up and asked a few questions and clarification, made some suggestions, so I appreciate the work, and I wanted to share that those folks had supported, sent support for him, too.
Thank you, and I also want to thank Larry for, you know, his long-term service for the citizens of Lane County, and also his, you know, ability to carry out the strategic plan, which included this succession plan, force of it, bringing Jacob in, having him here for a year and a half interview. It was really great. I liked the way that was put, and I really appreciate Jacob and the comment that Mira made about the customer service focus with the staff and changing that, that's something that we've stressed with county staff here also, is that customer service focus. It does kind of change the way you perceive your clients and the community you're dealing with, and I appreciate that. I just want to make one item clear, because the board order kind of says according to the terms of its employment agreement that, but in the staff report, it's clear that that agreement is to be negotiated at this point, so I just wanted to clarify for folks that might be watching this, and if you do approve the board order, I think there's still a negotiation process that has to take place between Mr. Fox and the Chair and Vice Chair of the Housing Board to come to terms on exact salary compensation and benefits, so that's the next step, and I'm sure that will come back later on. But I really appreciate the way this was handled, and I know that Larry did a pretty exhaustive search in hiring Jacob and to kind of repeat that cost over again, just to come back to the same person, I think, whose money not very wisely spent, so I appreciate the effort that he's made. This is kind of the way transitions should be handled, and it's impossible, you know, to have that succession plan and have a period of transition, and that year and a half interview. So, I really appreciate the process, and I support the recommendation of the staff on this.
Christian. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Larry, appreciate the work you have put forth, and thank you for your service for all the years at HACSA, and remember, organize the folks who came for public comment, good form. That's good form. I would admit, so, doesn't happen by accident, so remember, put that together, nice job. And I would agree, I appreciate the work that Jacob has done. I will say, the only time we haven't done an open process, and I haven't been involved, it ended up being a complete and total disaster, but, and I think we can get past that, even when we hired, you know, Gamal, it was an open process. I was involved in hiring a college president, that was an open process, I mean, very much so, but I feel very comfortable with Jacob as far as the succession plan. The, you know, it's very common, at least in the private sector, but we are dealing with the public's money, and we are dealing with the public process, and there are times when I think an open process is probably the correct way, but I would suggest, I think the comments I heard in this morning, which But I would suggest, I think the comments I heard in this morning, which, by the way, I would agree with them, I think it's important to have that, have a person in place who's been on the job now for a while, who's prepared and ready to go. And I think the following, really what I consider as someone that are the legend here locally in the housing, within HACSA, but not only, just in the public housing business, Larry, you've done an extraordinary job. I really appreciate all the work you've done. But I feel very confident Jacob will be able to not only take over, but in really a time of challenging, where it's been challenging, especially from the funding side. And so I can totally understand why you're maybe getting a little tired. And so I'm very comfortable with Jacob moving into this position.
I just wanted to mention that I think that Larry is four months away from retirement, and I don't know how many times we'll have an opportunity to talk with you about your service and the length of time we have left, but I just want to...
I'm sure he'll be back.
You're sure he'll be back? I really appreciate your care and attention and diligence. And I think that the partner agencies such as Metro or Shelter Care or other agencies and organizations, they've certainly expressed to me their strong support for your leadership and what you've done and how hard you've worked. And I do appreciate hearing you back. Thank you.
I have some comments, actually. I've been able to work with Jacob for the past fourteen months and gotten to know him really well. And I find that he works really well with residents and listens and deals with things when they come up. And I agree with everyone else that it's just a great way to do this. He's been here for eighteen months, got to know, we kind of know how he deals with things. And the residents like him and feel comfortable going to him when necessary. And I also received the letter from Nick Fish, which was amazing. I would like to see us can go ahead and...
What do you mention, Succession Director?
Chair, in hearing on testimony, I'd like to approve an order 15-03, S03-03-H in the matter of appointing Jacob Fox to be the next Executive Director of the Housing and Community Services Agency of Long County.
Actually, can I have any discussion on this motion?
Okay, discussion.
Okay, good. I did want to have a discussion on this topic. We have known for some time that Larry was going to retire, and we, in my view, have not really prepared for today very well. And that isn't because of the people involved on the agency end. I think that Larry's done a great job in trying to respond to the dual concern of his retirement and running the agency, bringing in Mr. Fox, and really doing a great job. But I would probably say on our end of the table that we needed to have, and I realize we're not going to have, but we needed to have a different process than having the Executive Director, you know, make a proposal to have the Deputy Director move into the position. And I say this for a couple of reasons. One is, as Commissioner Liken mentioned, we have had some experience with this process where we've had a really, you know, good, long-time employee that has been positioned to put in the position, but then for a variety of reasons, it didn't work out. We've also, we've had the opposite. We've had the opposite experience where we thought the person was the right person for the job at the right time, and we appointed them and it worked out really well. But I would submit that the process itself is important and that, as I said when the Board of Commissioners appointed Ms. Richardson, I thought Ms. Richardson would compete well for the position. She'd been in the position of acting administrator. She had been legal counsel for the organization. So she, in my view, and I said this openly at the time that the board hired her, I felt she would compete favorably. That didn't mean that I thought she would, should have been selected, because that wasn't clear at that time. And I thought we should have at least some process other than in the, you know, a recommendation to hire her. Or in that case, not even a recommendation. So I'm going to be a no on this motion, and that's because I believe that if we're going to be clear with our employees, both the county employees that watch these meetings and the HACSA employees, we have to be clear that we do conduct our business openly and that when we have a vacancy, we give a fair shot to people to apply. And we have a reasonable process that's reasonable for the circumstances of the job. If that happens to be a one-month period for people to submit their applications, then that's the process that might be reasonable under the circumstances. But to say that we've made a decision and this is the way it's going to be without further review at the board, I just don't support that. And I'll just say to Mr. Fox, none of this is just respect to you. I feel that you would compete very favorably for this. You've been, you know, an excellent public administrator. Your references are excellent. It really is not a commentative on you. And as I would say, if we were to have a process that would allow people to apply, I doubt if we could find too many people that we'd compete more favorably. But we wouldn't know that unless we had processes. So if we're going to tell our managers out there that they need to be looking for good people in all walks of life to apply for jobs, that it's an open process, then we better model that. And that starts with us. I would be remiss in pointing out that Mr. Mo Krasinski would not be here without a national competitive process. And he did not have any personal connections to any of us at the point that he was applying for this job. We didn't know he existed. And quite frankly, I didn't even know his county existed. So my point is that we need to have an open process. And so I'll be a no on the motion.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. You know, I'm listening very intently to what Commissioner Sorensen said. I wish I'd had a little bit of a preview, because I'm having to respond on the fly right now. And I understand the open process, and Ms. Mo Krasinski, ever since she's gotten here, has been nothing but open up our processes here. That is, that's stated goal at Seaball Office, that everything that we do is open, everything we do is according to a point. You know, but having been elected to office, won thirteen elections to four different offices, I'm still learning. And I'd like to ask you, Commissioner Sorensen, with your lead, Mr. Chair, to, at what point should we have taken over? When Mr. Fox came on board almost two years ago now, right when I first became the County Commissioner, it was my presumption at the time that it was a succession plan that was in place and that it was, some might call it a different sphere, maybe called an apprenticeship program, you know, somebody learning the job, learning the details of the work. At what point could I personally have made a suggestion to alter the process that I felt was in place?
Well, today is a good place to start, because today we decide whether we're going to have an application process or not. And by this motion that's on the table to appoint one person without even making notice to the public that the job is open, to me, that's not modeling a good open process. If we defeated this motion, we said, "Hey, we really like the fact that, you know, that Larry has brought in a really high-quality person who really loves this community, is doing a great job." And we said, "We want to make sure that this is an open process. We want to hear from not just the people that have been asked to come today, but we want to hear from other people that are connected with this agency." And I'm sure that most of them will have positive responses to this. But let's just take that moment to pause and say, "Why don't we have an open process, even if it is a month or two months, and use that time to review that and have this board do it?" I don't think it's necessarily a big decision that we've acquiesced this, because I think it's been good that Larry has worked on this succession plan and brought people in and they are available to step in. I don't think that's bad. I think that's good. I think that's what he's been doing, and I think that's part of the succession plan. But the decision that we made to select the Executive Director of this agency, in my view, should not be made when there's a motion put on the table to just hire him, Mr. Fox. So I feel like we should defeat the motion, have an open process, brief but open process, so that we can, so we can have more open process.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorensen. Madam Chair, Commissioner Sorensen is very reasonable in his response for that. I thank you for having thought about it, obviously, quite a bit. And I've been going through this last two years presuming the direction we're headed towards, the direction we're, we have motioned for today. My question is, this is a public office. It's, and what notice was placed? Did we actually place a notice for this position being open at any point?
Well, I guess what I could say is, we've had discussions for the last year and a half about it, a public session. So, and the notice of today's meeting was posted, the materials were posted, so I think people who are interested have the opportunity to comment.
And certainly, my desire for process was well met throughout the entire, you know, two years, basically two years of working in this department. However, that being said, a job opening was never actually placed, was it, right? Or was a job opening placed?
No.
And Commissioner Sorensen, you suggested that Mr. Cable's going to be here for another four months. That's the correct number, four months?
Little less.
Little less than four months, so four years. I think the entire world believes that Mr. Fox is the right person for this job. Certainly, when Mr. Smith says that, but what I would actually like to open up a little bit here is, I think we have time to publicly notice the position and take thirty days to go through more of a public job opening process and then respond to it with a, with this board. I'm just running that up for a debate at this point in time. Thank you, Commissioner Sorensen, for giving us that.
Okay, so Commissioner Bosavich and Commissioner Liken.
Thank you, Sorensen. I have one quick question for Larry, and then I'd like to make some follow-up comments about that process. Can you quickly tell me about advertising hiring process for the Assistant Executive Director when Jacob was hired? Was that advertised?
No. It was a nine-month recruiting process between Dorothy Cummins, who's then Deputy Director, and myself. And I felt really confident that we were following the direction of the board. I mean, it's in the strategic plan, we talked about it a lot, and I felt then, and I still feel, that we got the best possible person.
But the recruitment process was still within the agenda? And you looked at more than one candidate?
Yeah.
That's just what I wanted to get to that point. You know, we've had, you know, made references to what the county boards have in the past. We've gone for a national search and ended up with what I feel was an administrator that didn't do a good job from a national search, done correct appointments in the past from the staff at the county, had great success with that, and we've had mediocre success with that and all that. But in this case, we have standardly passed the strategic plan, which I believe Commissioner Sorensen voted in favor of, as I'm reading from this year's strategic plan that I believe Commissioner Sorensen voted in favor of. Goal three, sub-goal one, complete succession plan for the Executive Director and complete succession plans for key senior management positions. And, you know, number one on that, you know, Larry will retire as they make Fox be the next Executive Director, yes, staff responsible HACSA board. That's right in the strategic plan that Commissioner Sorensen voted to approve. We've had this fight in our strategic plan for every year I've been on the HACSA board, the last four, you know, going on five years now, four and a half years, about succession plan. It's been directed on the board, it's been publicly advertised, publicly voted on annually. This meeting was publicly advertised with an agenda item about having the possibility of direct appointment of Mr. Fox. Now, the media picked up the fact that they're forming an LLC to be financing the Baskin Village Phase Two, but apparently, you know, the direct appointment of somebody that has been identified as something we wanted done in our strategic plan, we voted on annually unanimously, approved our strategic plan. Didn't seem to rise to the level of getting even a single media source. Because it's just been something that we've been trying to do all along, very publicly. And the recruitment process that we directed, the Executive Director goes, we defined somebody to be his successor, who's done, you know, pretty openly discussing a lot of these very open and noticed public meetings. You know, we have the cameras on, you know, people have been able to watch all along. I don't feel like there has been absolutely no public news, no public process in this at all. I think it's been very deliberate and very open to the public to understand what the HACSA board was planning on doing and how we were getting to where we are today. I don't think there's any benefit in advertising this again. You know, we've gone through the recruitment process and looked for the correct person. I don't think, you know, that there's any necessity there, particularly seeing our strategic plan has been supported every year and as it's also having to be given to HUD every year by unanimous vote. I can't understand why we would change direction from our strategic plan suddenly and change our process and say, "Oh, now all of a sudden we have to jump back and have an open advertisement." Because we had this plan for the last five years to do succession planning and been very open and public about it. It seems like, you know, it's opening up a public process, particularly for the advertising that we can say we had an open public process. And we have had an open public process all along. So I support the motion as it's on the table right now.
Thank you, Mr. Madam Chair. Well, I do appreciate Commissioner Sorensen's remarks. I, because I think at our last board meeting, I expressed a little bit of anxiety over this issue and whether we should have more of an open process. And even coming in this prior, I was leaning toward no. But then what happened is, you know, not only just the testimony this morning and, of course, the letter from Commissioner Fish, but I have the opportunity to serve on the Housing Policy Board. And what I'm able to view and observe is really the, what I call the interaction between HACSA leadership and the folks who are involved in the, especially the nonprofit development community. And it's pretty obvious that, in fact, the last couple of meetings that I've attended, Jacob has been the lead from HACSA there, answering the questions. And I think what you see here is somebody with a specific skill set. And I think that's probably what leaned me back out of to, instead of going through an open, an open piece like this. And I do appreciate Commissioner Bosavich, the strategic plan. I actually, I think that's just a good reminder. But I think what you're looking at is somebody with a specific skill set and someone who has actually come from a position where they have managed people, because this is part of the job. You're the Executive Director, you're relied on making the decisions, but also the ultimate decisions with managing... decisions with managing the organization. And I think based on the skills that I see with Jacob, that's why I'm comfortable about moving forward. On the process itself, I'm not going to necessarily disagree with Commissioner Sorensen on this because I think this board knows that I've had that issue, and I brought that issue up. But as we come here today, that's why I'm prepared to go ahead and vote yes. And what I will tell you is, while we haven't had a, at least, I missed a couple there, but the Housing Policy Board hasn't had a formal discussion about this, but I will tell you that offline, members of, who are part of the Housing Policy Board, but also those in attendance, which many are here this morning, would also agree that the succession plan of Larry to Jacob makes sense and just keeping that in place. Because with these different groups, it still comes out that HACSA is in a strong, strong position. I mean, HACSA is really the organization that is going to be able to negotiate or receive the HUD funds and then also work with our different partners and how important strategic that'll be. So that is the reason why I'm going to go ahead and support this. And it really, because we're not talking about a county administrator that has, that you're looking at so many different departments throughout the organization. This really is specific. And so that's why I'm comfortable about moving forward. And I think when you look at Jacob's skill set, his resume, and what he has to offer, it actually is, it makes sense on the succession plan to move forward. So I'm comfortable with that. I think if it was a position where it was requiring somebody who was overseeing multiple departments, there's no doubt about it, I would not want to just appoint somebody, but instead go into the open process like we did with Mr. Mokrysky.
Commissioner Sorensen? Just wanted to mention that a part of what we're doing is making sure there's an orderly transition. And, you know, one of the things that is good about the way Larry has set this up is that, you know, by working hard to get a really good person into the job of deputy director, you know, the period of time that Larry has with us isn't always, isn't really the determinant factor of how quickly we have to move on this. And the reason for that is, we have a deputy director who moves into that position in an acting capacity. And that's another reason not to necessarily say that this decision should be made today because in less than, I think that was the way Larry phrased it, less than four months, he retires. Then the deputy director becomes acting director. And I feel like that, again, leads to the view, "Well, then why not at least have a little more process than we have?" I would also take exception to the idea that because the strategic plan says, "We'll work on this," it doesn't mean, and by voting for it, doesn't mean that I thought that was the very best part of the strategic plan. There's a lot in the strategic plan that people, you know, in the community should be proud of. And I think that this is the first opportunity that we've had to discuss the process in any meaningful way, is to have a motion to appoint somebody to the position. And I would say, I have been rather, you know, reserved about, "Well, why wasn't this brought up earlier?" Well, the answer is, because I didn't think someone would actually make a motion just to appoint somebody. So be that as it may, you know, I have come to the view that, you know, if I can express my views and give my point of view, that's the democratic process. I've done that. Two things. The bottom line, of course, is what's best for the residents and employees, I think, at HACSA. And I think going forward with this motion, I think makes a whole bunch of sense, considering what's going on. I'm a little bit put off by the fact that it's coming up right now, right here. I've only been on this board a little while, but I've seen app opportunity for this objection to be brought up. I remember bringing it up myself about the process. But the process has gone along. We've come to a point that I'm really happy about, and I think HACSA would be better off with us moving forward, residents would be better off with just appointing Jacob. And I think, as inside, I think as a board, I think what Commissioner Sorensen said, and when he said it, it kind of, is it kind of important? I think we need to communicate. Maybe this is how it's done, but this is surprise to me, and I'm sorry that it was right here, right now. I would have liked to have had time to look at it. And, but for me, certainly, I'm going to vote for this because for the residents of HACSA, this is, I can't imagine a better result. And as long as someone, if someone taps me on the shoulder and says this is illegal, you can't, you have to go through some sort of application process. Other than that, I'm very okay with this.
I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Okay. So, a roll call vote? I haven't done that yet.
This is just a test. You just call each person by name, ask for the vote.
Okay.
A little bit more discussion, but I don't just object to a roll call vote. I just want to emphasize that as we discussed the strategic plan over the last several years, we specifically discussed the goal of succession several times. It wasn't like this was buried in the strategic plan. It was an item that was specifically discussed and questioned at the time the strategic plan came up, and questions about where we were with succession plan were specifically talked about. You know, so I don't feel the characterization that it's one thing that's buried in the plan. It was specifically talked about prior to us voting on the plan. So if there was an issue with this kind of succession plan, there has been opportunity to say, you know, "I don't like this, I want to amend the strategic plan," you know, many times in the past with other members. So that characterization, I think, is an active characterization that the rest of the strategic plan was created for. This was kind of buried in there, and that's why I voted and supported it. I think we would have to admit, sleep in the media, to have voted to support this strategic plan without knowing that had succession planning built into it that we had already discussed.
Well, just to, I hope, wrap up my comments on this. I feel like the board in appointing Jacob is doing a good thing. I don't think it's a bad thing. I think Jacob's going to do a great job in the position. I do take the view that we have to model leadership. And nowhere in the past two years has been the idea that we would appoint the executive director without giving notice to other job seekers. Nowhere has it ever been stated that we would have a motion written up and presented on a Thursday and appear on a board meeting on a Tuesday that would say we would appoint the deputy director to the position. That's something that occurred within the last, you know, apparently, the last week. The people that are supporting this motion, I think, are doing it for the best of motives. I think that the record is pretty clear. Everybody that's been asked thinks that Jacob is the right person for the right job. And I have a hard time arguing the contrary. I'm not arguing the contrary. My point is that we have people that watch our meetings, we have people in the nonprofit sector, we have people in government, we have people in our county government especially that watch our housing meetings, and we have people, obviously, in HACSA that watch our meetings. And we want to model the idea that you apply for the job, there's an open process, and we hire the best person for the job. And we're open about being open to people applying to these positions. So that's fundamentally my view. And like I said, on this motion, I don't particularly think it's a bad outcome, but I think we should model the idea. And I guess if I ever have a chance to ask Mr. Fox in his new role, if he comes to executive director, I'll ask him if he's going to model that, because I think that's an important thing for managers to model.
Thank you. And thank you for that, Commissioner Sorensen. I'm talking about modeling leadership. You know, we have to model leadership, not at the last moment, we have to model leadership throughout the entire process. Unless you're in a movement to come back in a combat situation, you rarely have to make last moments, if you're going regarding modeling leadership. And I believe that from the very beginning of this process, that succession plan was in place. And I felt personally, and it seems to me that it's broadly held in the community, those who pay attention, and more should, that we were modeling leadership in bringing Mr. Fox on board, we were modeling leadership in making certain that Mr. Fox fit into the organization, we're modeling leadership in making certain that Mr. Abel's great work was backed up by the future great work of the next director. And I believe that we've been modeling leadership all along on this, that, you know, an opportunity to model leadership comes at any point in time, but I don't think it's necessarily at the last moment in time that the best chance to model leadership occurs, not throughout the deliberative process, which I believe we have had. Thank you for the discussion, Commissioner Bozovic. Mr. Massingill, thank you very much for the discussion that you provided, and you've helped me make a fine decision on this vote. Thank you.
Okay. You want it? So we're going to do a roll vote then? Start with Commissioner, how do we start? Go around the table? Commissioner Fox?
Yes.
Commissioner Lightkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Bozovic?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart? Just went blank. Commissioner Massingill?
Aye.
Commissioner Sorensen?
No.
Commissioner Me? Yes. Okay, so the I's have it.
That's a six to one, Commissioner Sorensen voting?
Right, six to one.
But that was just a roll vote. We still have to take the official vote. No, that's it. That's it. We don't have that vote. Okay. Okay. I just want to throw something in. I love what just happened. I hate that this discussion happened this way because I think the discussion process is really important, and this board really gets into those kind of conversations. So if this ever happens again, I sure would love for us to be able to spend, I'm open to this kind of a conversation at a meeting. You know, are we going the right way? Is this way, is it that way? As far as I know, there's nothing wrong with sending emails, as long as everybody gets an email. I think... Okay, I live in a different world than you guys do. I'll yield to your judgment on that one. And as a resident of HACSA Housing, as far as I can tell, I'm grateful for the board's action, and I'm grateful for, and I'm feeling positive going forward.
Okay, so, what do we do next? Now I'm all confused.
Item seven, the executive session.
Okay, do we need one?
No.
And, yeah, I lost my other part of the agenda, that's the... Oh, executive session, no. Do we have any other vision?
I might just mention, if you don't mind, Larry and Jacob, when I was at Oak Ridge last week, there were some conversations about trying to set some vision for the future of Oak Ridge. I know they have a strong partnership with San Francisco Paul, but there may be some opportunities to partner up for some of the housing projects in Oak Ridge. I just want to throw that out there, that I'm going to make a recommendation that they contact and speak with you about some options to be making forward, so, Commissioner.
That'd be great.
Now, did this extend to the adjournments?
Yes.
Mr. Agenda, and I have asked staff to pull item five, B1, Consent Calendar, for separate discussion after the consent. That'll happen immediately after the consent calendar. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? Seeing, hearing none, we'll move on to item two, which is public comments. And we've got four people so far signed up for public comment. And the first one is Deborah Lawrence. And if you'll come to the microphone and state your name and the city you're from for the record, and then I'll begin your three minutes, if I can get my timer out.
Good afternoon or morning. I'm Deborah Lawrence. I'm from Eugene. I'm going to read a statement. In 2005, I was accused of sexual discrimination. I worked as a professional for Health and Human Services for eighteen years. I want to discuss several specific issues related to how this claim of sexual discrimination was processed against me. I had to investigate these issues starting in 2013 due to a related issue. It all happened because of my sexual orientation. I was the victim, not the victimizer. My heartfelt thanks to those of you who have helped me with this matter. My current concern is for employees. They should be made aware of what can happen to them and how to get help. Administrators have stonewalled me for the past two years. I was told by Alicia Hayes's office it is against county policy to speak with retirees. Efforts to access my records, policy and procedures, and my county commissioner resulted in insulting and intimidating emails from county council. I was told I was a waste of precious county resources. Accessing personnel information is for all intents and purposes next to impossible. The investigation into charges against me did not include interviews with anybody. I have here letters from all the staff and associates who knew me and witnessed my conduct. Here is also a copy of county council's emails to me, as well as interdepartmental communications between ASME and Health and Human Services. It is apparent that there were gross violations of my rights. Cronyism and corruption was at the heart of this. I called ASME three times for assistance, they flatly refused to speak to me. They assisted a peer of mine to make a complaint against me, but refused to assist me in any way whatsoever. This occurred directly after ASME lost a grievance against my supervisor. I had no idea a grievance had actually occurred or failed. I was not allowed to speak to anybody during this investigation, including the investigator, the staff, other associates, ASME, the complainant, or administration. For eight years, I thought ASME did this investigation, until June of 2013, when I spoke with ASME officials. In 2013, my now-retired supervisor admitted to me that he was forced to participate in this ruse or lose his job. He was my only point of contact. Lynn County is responsible to monitor its administrators and to protect the rights of all employees, protected status or not. All employees should know about EEOC and BOLE and how to make a formal complaint against ASME if necessary. In my case, ASME and HNHS worked together to victimize me and to expose my sexual orientation in hopes of prolonging and winning an employment dispute that had nothing to do with me. If this can happen to me, it can happen to anyone. All employees and retirees should speak up. If you want a transparent government, you have to be transparent yourself. Thank you so much, and I would like to just provide these...
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mike McFadden, followed by Jerry Tinell.
So, good morning, I'm Mike McFadden from Eugene, and I just sort of want to continue my discussion about the long-range acoustic device. I really do, again, want to thank you for pulling that from the consent calendar for discussion alone. This is a device, it's referred to by the manufacturers as a sound cannon, as a sonic weapon. And while I don't dispute or disagree with any of the positive uses that you all mentioned when this was being discussed, I think that it's important to remember that, like most technology, this thing is a double-edged sword. It can be used for excellent purposes or can be misused. And the reason that motivated me for wanting to speak about it and bring it to your attention is because I just want to ensure that in the course of it being used, it's not misused against peaceful assemblies or groups of people. It does have the capacity to cause damage to people's inner ear if it's misused. It does have the capacity to cause damage to people's inner ear if it's misused. So, I think that it's really important to remember that, you know, a lot of technologies these days are double-edged swords, and they have positive and negative aspects to them. With the ongoing, you know, computerization and automation within many industries, we're seeing a lot of workers becoming displaced, is, you know, there's less and less manual labor needing to be done in a lot of manufacturing sector jobs. But the best example I think that is important to remember is, you know, the handheld smartphone. You know, they're very useful. You can use them to summon help in an emergency, you can use them to stay in contact with people, you can use them to look up all sorts of useful information. But, you know, handheld cellphones are being compared to as being as dangerous, if not more so, than drunk driving, and there's, you know, a proliferation of people who seem to be addicted to them in a way, unable to stop looking at them, unable to put them down. And when they're operating a motor vehicle while doing so, you know, it's incredibly dangerous, and sometimes perhaps even more dangerous than being, you know, under the influence while driving. So, I think that it's important to have a whole view of a technology, a piece of technology, have a well-rounded view of its positive and negative aspects, and not only in y'all's position to just be mindful of that, but to perhaps even verbalize that as well, because you're in a position to be reviewing these things, and I think that it's important for you to perhaps discuss them in a more well-rounded manner. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jerry Tenell, followed by Doug Kochy.
Or, I'm just hard of hearing, I guess. I'm just hard of hearing, is what it is. But I've got a handout I wanna give to you. Throw it away if you wish. I'm glad to read it for you. What I gave you pertains to the printing industry. Let me introduce myself. I'm Jerry Tenell. I've been in the printing business 52 years in this town. I was born and raised here, and was old farm boy, where we used to raise pole beans for 25 years. What I passed out to you is something regarding the contract for Lynn County Printing. And I'm gonna give you a little background on how this here happened. If it wasn't for me, I wouldn't be here today, talking to you about this subject, because the county has never wanted to address this issue about printing. Currently, right now, Central Print has been doing the county's printing for over 16 years. As she was doing this, they were doing this printing for you folks back before Ali Dumdi was on the, was a commissioner. So, you guys have, and this is not an issue that you folks generally would even look at, and I understand that, because you set policy, you don't, you know, take care of the daily routine stuff. I finally got the people here in the county to put this thing out to bid again, and we talked to, four years ago, we were in here and asked that you put this out to bid, and they said, "Yeah, we're gonna do that next year." You know, this stuff has been going on for years and years and years. And it's not that you're gonna make the decision or anything, but if you take a close look at this, you'll see that InstaPrint or QSL, and I need to explain that a little bit to you, QSL owns InstaPrint. I am employed at QSL now, half, as the saying goes, half-assedly. I don't mean that disrespectfully, but that's, but if you'll notice that QSL is much cheaper on some items, Central Print is cheaper on letterheads and business cards only. We, generally speaking, are less expensive on everything else, other than a few odds and ends in the bottom. But that's pretty much even, Stephen. But my contention is this: When you folks finally put the thing out to bid, I had to call one of the county commissioners sitting up here and ask if he could get us an extension to put our bid together, because they wanted it within a week. Well, we couldn't put our bid together within one week. After all these years, you know, the, some of the people working down below, you know, they, well, if you notice the contract, that whoever's the lowest bidder gets the contract, which is fine. Why'd they put out two contracts? Why'd they give QSL a contract and us, and Central Print a contract? That's never the way it happens in the printing industry. When I owned, I used to own Shelton Turbo printers, and own InstaPrint also. But way back when, we used to do all of the printing for the state of Oregon. When I had Shelton Turbo, that's a bid contract, and whoever, you know, and we were the low bidder on that thing. And why is it that I had to come to a county commissioner and ask for an extension on this thing? And why didn't this committee could've just as easily, just as easily, said, "Okay, QSL gets this here stuff, and Central Print gets the letterheads, the business cards," 'cause they were cheaper on it? No, they chose not to do that. They chose to give two contracts. And here's the kicker that I think is really sad. They have given the information to all the sub-department heads, I guess, and said, "You go ahead and order from wherever you wanna order from, either Central Print or QSL." Do you think that they're gonna change or disrupt anything that's going on right now? Or just let their people just do what they do? Well, okay, since that contract was let, we have not had one job, not one. Not one. Not even a, get an estimate, not, nothing. And so, that tells me that the county, the department heads are only interested in doing what they do and don't disrupt anything. And I think that's sad. I think it's sad that you are, started many years ago with Central Print, which, and they're a good printer, I'm not saying anything about the company, but I don't think it's right that the county treats everybody within the county differently. Why are they treating us differently than Central Print? Just think about that. Why don't we have a contract? Why don't we have a portion of the contract?
Thank you, Jerry. Doug Kochy?
Good morning. My name's Doug Kochy. I've been a resident of Eugene all my life. I'm the owner of QSL and now InstaPrint. And the county would save a tremendous amount of money, looking at the results of this RFP, the county would save a tremendous amount of money if they broke that out into the five categories that's listed by the RFP and by the results. You know, we're always, we're always looking for ways to save money, and that's, that's my point, is the county would save a tremendous amount of money by doing that. The other thing is, my, my attempt to contact the county at this, after the contract was let, to find out what the scope of, of what our commitment would be, and what would be expected of us, after three phone calls, I got no return. And I don't, I don't wanna be surprised by an order showing up and not knowing what to do with it or how to deal with it. It would've been nice to know where we stood with all of this. So, there's a substantial amount of printing here, as you can tell, obviously, and I wouldn't wanna be caught unprepared. So, thank you for hearing me, and have a good day.
Thank you. That concludes who was signed up. Was there anyone else that wanted to address the board this morning? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to item 3, which is Commissioner's response and/or remonstrance. And we have Commissioner Liken, then Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I'm the county commissioner that Mr. Tenell first came to, and also, I ran into Mr. Kochy. It was an event not too long ago, and Doug, Doug then was expressing a little bit of confusion, I guess, as much as anything. And my suggestion was, why don't you come before the board? And so, that's why they're here this morning, so I do appreciate you taking the time to come before the board to discuss this. What I, what I'm not gonna ask for, and I'm gonna look at Steve right now, is, what I'm not gonna ask for is maybe a quick response from Mr. Chaney on this, but if you could, I'm gonna suggest maybe, and to get with Mr. Chaney and talk about the process itself. While I've known these two for many years, Doug and I were in 2030 Club together, that seems like a long time ago. I knew Jerry when he had hair. No, I'm just kidding. Anyway, but I've known both for a long time, and I know that in the industry, been highly, highly respected in the overall industry. And so, what I would like to do is just maybe is, is ask you to, 'cause I'm, I don't, I'm not gonna ask Mr. Chaney to come up and give a on-the-fly response. I think it would make more sense if you could maybe get together with Mr. Chaney in legal counsel, and can just kind of talk about the process, how the bid is put out there, and so on and so forth. You know, if Central Printing is the ultimate bid, fine. And I'm not sure, I wouldn't have an issue with that personally, but I think when Doug was, when he personally told me that there was some confusion here, I, when I suggested he could come before the board, that just raised a little bit of flag for me, and so that's, that's what I've been asked from Mr. Mokraski, if you could just look into that a little further. And one other thing I'd like to do, real quickly, and this is not on this, this topic, but Commissioner Farr and I were back in DC, and I remember getting a phone call from my wife about the tragedy that happened on 54th Street. In fact, Pat and I were talking about that, about how horrible that was, and for the family. I'm just gonna make this announcement, I don't usually do this about private businesses, but I think this is worthy of doing it. Papa's Pizza, by the way, is holding a fundraiser on, all day long, at their locations on the 5th. So, on Thursday, 50% of all their proceeds will go to what's called the Hudson Relief Fund. This is the Hudson family, and it turns out their great-grandmother actually attends church with me, and so, so this is really a significant tragedy. I've been on the, either texting or on the phone with Mayor Lombard about three or four times, in fact, we're gonna meet Friday morning, maybe to talk about this a little further, if there's some things we can do from a local standpoint. The investigation's still ongoing, so I'm not gonna jump to any conclusions, but I think it's important to note, and I would just, first of all, I wanna say thank you to Papa's Pizza for even doing this. And this is out, all their three locations, it's all day long that they're open. There's a flyer out there, I just found this on Douglas Gardens Facebook page, if you wanna go to that, the flyer's there, and you can take that into any Papa's Pizza on the 5th. And so, I wanna say thank you to them very, very much. My guess is their medical costs are probably significant, and not only that, which is the cost of the funeral, is gonna be very significant as well. So, just wanted to mention that. But thank you to all who came here this morning to testify, much appreciated.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Commissioner Liken. That's difficult to talk after hearing your testimony. Ms. Mokraski, you know, we have a requirement to post Bureau of Labor and Industry mandatory postings in our workplace, and I just, I've seen them, they're there, and I just wanted to make sure, in response to Ms. Lawrence's testimony, I can't cover everything, because much of this, I've not, I don't know the details of, but she's suggested that employees need to know how they can contact BOLI. I believe that that is posted in each workplace in the county, in each building. Could you just make sure that everything is, that we're up to date on everything, that anybody who wants to contact the Bureau of Labor and Industry can at any time freely contact the Bureau of Labor and Industry, the numbers are posted clearly in our workplace? Okay, yes, if you're just, I don't need a response to that, I believe that you and Ms. Edwards are fully capable of making certain that what we have to do is being done. Thank you.
Any other remonstrance?
I'd just like to first thank everyone for coming in to address the board. It's always the pleasure of the board to hear from the public, and I wanna thank Jerry in particular for identifying to the county our issue with the fact that we hadn't really bid our printing out, and had been just kind of relying on Central for our printing over the years, and it just kind of got to be, you know, an automatic thing for the county, and as staff turns over and we cut back on staff, it seemed to just stay that way. And he brought it to our attention, and that's what generated the RFP process and, that he's concerned about with now. But I just wanna thank Jerry for being a little bit tenacious about, about that issue. And I know, you know, I don't know Jerry and Doug as well as my wife does, seeing that she's a graphic designer and uses a lot of the printers around here, and I think you guys both know my wife's.
Get a little louder so I can hear you.
Sorry. Jerry, I was thanking you for identifying the issues around our print contracts and, basically, being the instigator for us actually going out for a public process on this. And just noting that my wife probably knows both of you guys better than I do, being a graphic designer and doing a lot of printing work over the last 20-some years in the Eugene area, whether it's you guys, or Borland, or Central, or whoever's worked with all you guys, I think. And you guys are professionals, and I appreciate your concerns. I hope that we can, you know, address those concerns over time with you. I think my understanding is the contracts, and was bid as this, was to be non-exclusive contracts, and that they could be pick and choose over which, which contract had lower prices for those specific items, and whether or not that's successfully been implemented throughout the county departments, that's a different question. But my understanding of the contracts were that they were advertised, that they would be awarded on a non-exclusive basis. You know, the low bidder, overall bidder would identify as primary, but the other bidders would be available to do work where their prices were lower than the low bidders on specific items. And my understanding of local printers is there are some things you guys are really good at and can do much cheaper and better than, than other guys, and I know that because my wife chooses one person for this kind of printing and another person for that kind, and actually sends her magazine clear up to Salem to get run on a web. So, I, so that's, it's, everybody has their specialties, so I appreciate you guys bringing that to our attention, and hopefully, we can get that straightened out and make sure the departments understand the contracting fully, and we're treating everybody fairly, and we've gone through and met the requirements for the public purchasing laws in the state of Oregon. And that's what was really important, and I think what you pointed out to us was, we really weren't following the correct public purchasing laws, and I believe the RFP process we've gone through has corrected that. Now, the next question is, is are we actually internally following some of that? And I think Commissioner Liken's asked our administrator for a report back on that, so I think we'll hear about that in the future. So, I really appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and hopefully, we'll get that resolved satisfactorily to you. But I, you know, you're the instigator for why we're fixing, why we were fixing the problem in the first place, which, you know, is always a good thing to have our citizens being our watchdogs for us, so I appreciate that. Any other remonstrance? Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And my haste to talk about BOLI and our legal requirements, I forgot to mention that Mr. Tenell provided me with a great deal of input in the 2003 legislative session. We wrote a bill together, a pretty thick bill, as I recall, which didn't get traction on our legs, but it was a good bill that, that should've gone through. I won't go into the details of it, but I wanted to thank you for that. I don't know if I've really given you my heartfelt thanks for how much work we put into that bill back in 2003, but thanks again.
Being in the printing industry, you know, I know a lot of you guys, we did a lot of your work, off the grid, off the grid, you know, there.
Well, that, back in those days, the bills were distributed to each legisl- Well, that, back in those days, the bills were distributed to each legislator, and we did the printing industry very well with that bill, because there's a lot of pages distributed to every legislator. Thank you.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and I don't know if we need three head nods or three supports, but I concur with Commissioner Liken's request, just to have a review of it and a recommendation back, if, looking at it, if there could be additional dollars saved, I think it's been good to have this brought to our attention, and if it makes sense, hopefully we'll see what your report is, so I concur with that. Thank you.
Next. If there's no further remonstrance, we'll move on, and is there any emergency business today?
No, there's not, Mr. Chair.
So, without any emergency business, we'll move forward to the consent calendar. Item 5B1 has been pulled. The consent calendar is usually passed as an entire single motion. Each individual item, though, there's background on, available on the Internet for folks watching, and if, we have a motion.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of the consent calendar as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's approved unanimously, and now we will discuss item 5B1, in the matter of appointing one member to the Human Services Commission. I asked to have this removed from the consent calendar, because at the time it was brought forward during future agenda items, I was not fully aware of the makeup of the Human Services Commission and the process for the Board to make the appointments. We have, I think, about 40 different committees and commissions we appoint folks to, whether it's ourselves or citizens, and I can't keep track of every single governance for every single committee we appoint to on the fly, and it kind of came up on the fly, and my understanding was, it was originally a request to have an agenda item, and then it became a consent item. And what I'd like to discuss is, there is a history with the Human Services Commission that it used to be two commissioners that served, not a commissioner and a budget committee member, and there was no real discussion about whether or not we wanted to try and go back to that or not. It basically says, two commissioners, or there may be a budget committee member appointed, and one commissioner. I feel it's important that there is a rural voice on the Human Services Commission, and I am willing to serve as a second commissioner to that Human Services Commission. You know, it's not just the Metropolitan Planning Services Commission, it is the Lane County Human Services Commission, and I wish to be that rural voice on that commission, unless there's another commissioner that's willing to serve, and we can have a discussion of that. But that is my motivation behind pulling this item, is to request the Board to consider going back to having two elected officials on it, instead of an elected official and an appointed budget committee member, and to possibly consider appointing myself as the second member to, you know, we already have Commissioner Farr serving. So with that, I'll leave that open for discussion in the Board. Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovic. I originally made the recommendation to the Board, and it is the Board's decision regarding appointments to the Human Services Commission. I made the recommendation, being a sitting member of the Human Services Commission, for the recommendation, which is for Lori Triger, who is a budget committee member appointed by Commissioner Sorenson. And the reason that I did so was really in order to continue with a practice that I had seen, that I had observed, while, when I became a Board Member, Rose Wildey was our representative to the Human Services Commission from the Budget Committee, and Rose Wildey was actually my appointee to the Budget Committee at the time. And so, in, going along with that process, I forwarded Ms. Triger's name, and it was, I have several emails to, and several correspondences to, that state that it is a Board decision who is appointed to the Budget, to the Human Services Commission, and also, if you look in the Lane Manual, it does state that it is a, there are two members appointed by the Lane County Board of Commissioners, both of which can be commissioners, or, in certain circumstances, a budget committee member. So Commissioner Bozovic is completely accurate in the fact that, historically, prior to the last six or seven or eight years, perhaps, it has been two budget committee members, maybe it's a little longer than eight years.
Two commissioners.
Two commissioners, thank you very much for that correction. So, this is all in order, and so I look forward to the discussion. I maintain my recommendation of Ms. Triger for the position, but I will listen to the discussion and see how that moves forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Sorenson.
So, just to get the procedure, today's, today's agenda has, on the consent calendar, to appoint Ms. Triger, is that 15-03-03-02?
That's accurate, yes.
Okay, so it's, it's on the consent calendar to appoint her, but what you're pointing out is, let's have a discussion of it, let's pull it off the agenda and have a discussion of it?
Well, that's what we're doing right now, it's been pulled. I pulled it under adjustments.
All right, so, I guess, you know, my position would be that, that the reason we switched some time ago from having two commissioners is because the attendance by the commissioners is low, and I don't know what the current facts are on.
I have 100% attendance.
You have 100%. What about Ms. Wildey? Pretty strong, too.
In her last year, her attendance was less than 100%.
Okay, so the idea would be, at least it's been historic, that the attendance by the commissioners, present company excluded, in terms of these committees and boards, is the attendance is low because we're appointed to and have so many other things to do. So I guess I'm open to the discussion, I think that, how long is this appointment under the proposed Board, or how long is this, just during the term of Ms. Triger's time on the Budget Committee?
I believe it's a two-year appointment.
Two years?
For the, for the Budget Committee, for the Human Services Commission, excuse me.
Okay.
And it's not, and once again, I'll point out, Commissioner Sorenson, it's not a individual commissioner's responsibility or duty to solely make the appointment, unlike the Budget Committee, this is a Board appointment, not an individual appointment.
Yeah, well, the appointments of the Budget Committee are Board appointments, too, but we've just traditionally allowed commissioners to make a recommendation with the idea that there might be greater buy-in by the Budget Committee members, or by the Board members of what the Budget Committee does, because they recommend the specific people.
Reading from Lane Manual, the term is one year, and I think we've annually made this appointment as part of our motion for all the committee appointments.
Okay, was Rose put on there for a year and then resigned, or she went off the Budget Committee and that took her off the?
I reappointed, I suggested a reappointment during my, after my first year on the Commission, and then I suggested a reappointment, which she declined.
Okay, so she wasn't, she wasn't appointed, again?
Correct.
Okay, well, Mr. Chair, is it appropriate to make a motion at this point, or?
Yes, if you would.
Okay, I'll move approval of the appointment of, and as presented in the consent calendar, the order, let's see, 13, 15-03-03-02.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
I'd like some discussion, personally. I'm going to vote against the motion. I really think it's important that we have rural representation, the configuration of the Human Services Commission is three representatives from the city of Eugene, two representatives from Lane County, and two representatives from Springfield. And right now, if we approve the motion as made, we will be representing from Lane County by an urban commissioner and an urban budget committee member. There'll be nobody on the Human Services Commission from rural areas and representing rural communities. One of the issues I've had in the past several years has been how funds are allocated out to rural nonprofits from the Human Services Commission. In fact, if you remember the budget process, I've made amendments to the budget in the past to make up funding, where they've taken larger cuts as a percentage than urban services, you know, so my concern is there is no voice for the rural nonprofits that are providing these critical services. You know, in the urban areas, there are multiple agencies sometimes that cover similar services, and a lot of these rural communities, there's usually one agency trying to do multiple services, and the actual inverse, so the impacts of cuts to rural communities sometimes can be much greater than urban cuts. And I think having that rural voice on the Human Services Commission is critical, and you know, I don't believe that appointing another urban member to the Human Service Commission serves that rural voice. So I'll be voting against this motion, unless somebody is willing to amend it to appoint either myself or Commissioner Stewart, but I understand Commissioner Stewart's already on several committees that might conflict timewise, I will be willing to serve, and I will be willing to try and keep my attendance as close to 100% as I've done with every committee and even advisory committee that I've been assigned to. You know, that's what I believe our duty is, as a Board Member, is to make these meetings, so I think it's critical. So I'll be voting no. Thank you, Commissioner Liken.
So Commissioner Bozovic, Chair Bozovic, I appreciate your discussion item. I would suggest that this is very consistent from your perspective. Commissioner Farr, which is, and I were just discussing about even the role on MPC, because it actually represents the urban area, that you were willing to step aside as a rural commissioner and make sure that Commissioner Farr was appointed, so you have two urban commissioners that represent on MPC, which actually makes sense. So I appreciate, I guess my question would be, would you, I mean, do you feel like you have the time to serve on this as a rural representative of, on the Human Services Commission? I know that many of these committees' times do conflict. I have a pretty good attendance in Housing Policy Board, but once in a while it does conflict with a Monday meeting at AOC or Salem, and so that comes up once in a while. So I guess that's my question to you, if you, if you feel like you have the time, I mean, your argument makes sense, and I guess that's the point I'm making, is having rural representation on that, at least for the time being, and I do appreciate that. So I guess that's my question back to you, is you have the, do you feel like you have the time to serve on the Human Services Commission along with your other duties as Chair, because as we all know, we've all sat in this position as Chair before, and it's clearly, there's a lot of responsibilities here as well, so that's my question back to you.
And my answer is yes, I do feel I have that time. I think a year ago, we redistributed some of the committees, and particularly with, and moved some of the assignments around, and I feel like I've got the ability to pick this committee up, because I actually lost several committees two years ago. So I do feel I have the time and the ability to commit to the Commission.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and I somewhat remember the process, I think Commissioner Sorenson pretty much was correct, the reason that we looked to have a budget committee member be appointed to one of the commissioner positions was because we had commissioners that were active doing other things that was difficult to get to the meeting. That being said, if we got a commissioner that wants, an additional commissioner that wants to serve on that committee, I think it's important, I do think that the piece about the rural component is important, but I would add that there's additional, now the CA, was it the Community Advisory Committee to the HSC, they have a lot of rural component to it, a lot of rural providers sit on that, so I know that there's a lot of rural input, and I've been, my time on this Board and service on HSC is, I know that Mr. Manella does a, does a great job trying to represent the rural component, so, but that being said, you're passionate for it and want to serve on it, so I would support your desire to have a second commissioner on that being you, if you find that the time is not conducive and can't do it, then I would fall back to what our code says, that we can place a budget committee member in that position.
Thank you. Is that an offer to amend, or you want to have this motion go forward?
This is Commissioner Sorenson's motion.
The motion on the floor right now with a second is to appoint the budget committee member, Commissioner Sorenson's budget committee.
And there is no amendment to that motion at this point in time?
No, there is not.
Difficult for the vote.
Well, to try to save out another motion, because they're not going to be supportive, I'll move that we amend the motion to have Commissioner Bozovic be the member representing the second position on the HSC.
I'll second that.
So there's a motion to amend, and that's what's on the floor right now, any discussion to the amendment? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The amendment passes 3-2. So now we are in discussion of the amended motion. Is there any further discussion on the amended motion? Seeing and hearing none.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry, Commissioner Farr.
You know, I think the points that you've made regarding two commissioners on the one urban, one rural, on the Human Services Commission is a very valid point, and based on that, I will be in support of the main motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amended motion? So we are now voting on Order 15-03-02, 03-02 as amended, which will be appointing myself to the Human Services Commission. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes 4-1. Thank you. So moving on, we're to County Council, and any announcements from County Council?
No, Your Honor.
You can tell he's a litigator, because he says, "Your Honor," automatically. Thank you, Sebastian, and then moving on to item 6B, the first reading setting the second reading in public hearing on ordinance number 15-02 in the matter of establishing county-community corrections, and we have Sebastian Tapia, Assistant County Counsel.
Good morning, Chair, this is the first reading for public hearing ordinance 15-02 in the matter of establishing county-community corrections, and Code 5.0200.
Any questions for staff? Do we have a motion?
No questions. Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the first reading, set the second reading in public hearing of ordinance number 15-02 in the matter of establishing county-community corrections for a second reading in Harris Hall on March 17, 2015, at 1:30.
Second. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Public Works, item 7A, the first reading setting the second reading and public hearing on ordinance number 15-03 in the matter of amending Chapter 16 of the Lane Code to adopt code language to make certain housekeeping corrections and clarification revisions to be consistent with Oregon revised statutes and Oregon administrative rules.
LC 16210, 16290, and its file number 509PA14-05053. And it looks like we have Mr. Laird.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today, we have two sets of first readings, preparing for the public hearings. That would be on March 17. The first one is Ordinance Number 15-03, in the matter of amending Chapter 16, as you described.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Stewart.
I would move the first reading and set the second reading in public hearing on Ordinance Number 15-03 for March 17, in Harris Hall, at 1:30 p.m.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. So Item 7B, which is the first reading and setting the second reading and public hearing for Ordinance Number PA1316, in the matter of amending the rural comprehensive plan to redesignate land from industrial to residential, rezone that land from RI rural industrial to RR2 rural residential, and adopt savings and severability clauses, and that's file number 509PA14-05143.
Thank you, Commissioners. Once again, giving the first reading and setting the second reading and announcing the public hearing for Ordinance Number PA1316.
Commissioner Stewart.
Mr. Chair, I'd move the first reading and set the second reading in public hearing for Ordinance Number PA1316, setting the second reading for March 17, in Harris Hall, at 1:30 p.m.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that moves us on to county administration. Any announcements?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, if you'll bear with my voice for a minute, I want to introduce to you a couple of our new employees here in Lane County. And I know the board has met both of these individuals. So this is more for the benefit of our employees across the organization that are watching and the members of the public that are paying attention to this, to demonstrate to everyone, I think, the quality of individuals that we continue to bring into this organization to serve the public. So the first is Shanda Miller. Shanda Miller. I knew I was going to get it wrong, it's Shanda. And as she comes up, here, let me just tell you a little bit about her. And then certainly Commissioner Liken and Commissioner Farr, who served on the selection committee, may have more to add about their experiences so far. But I know that each of the commissioners have had the opportunity to meet with Ms. Miller. She grew up in Washington State, in the Spokane Valley. She has a bachelor's of science degree from the University of Idaho and a master's of public administration, which is great, from the University of Oregon. She spent 10 years as a performance auditor for the Oregon Secretary of State Audits Division. And I'll let her share any other experience and personal insight with you. I can tell you that I've had the occasion in the last couple of weeks to have met with Ms. Miller a couple of different times, and I think she's hit the ground running. And you've seen some email communications from her. We all are excited, on the executive team and throughout the organization, to begin work with her, to continue to improve our organization. So I share with you your newest employee, not my employee, the board's employee, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mokraheysky. Good morning, Chair Bozovic. Hello, Commissioners. Happy to be here. I've been here a couple of weeks now, as Mr. Mokraheysky has mentioned. And I've had the opportunity to meet with folks, and I've also taken a tour of some of the local county facilities, such as the Lane County Customer Service Center on Delta, among others. Those of you who may be watching from home or work may be wondering, well, what exactly is performance auditing? So I'll just share, performance auditing is an objective and independent analysis that assists management in improving program performance. And really, I see my role here as, you know, helping to make county government better, build public trust, and provide useful information for decision-making. And my approach to performance auditing will be to really focus on mission-level audits, so analyzing whether the objectives and desired outcomes are being achieved for county programs. For example, if the mission of Health and Human Services is to promote and protect the health and well-being of individuals, families, and our communities, how well are they doing that? Are they meeting their objectives? In addition to looking at program effectiveness, I will also look at, I will look at the economy and efficiencies of programs. And I will focus on continuous improvement, improving performance management. And my approach will really be collaborative and solutions-based. And in my first few months, I plan to focus on building positive working relationships with county leadership and management, working on strategic planning for the audit function, and conducting an enterprise-wide risk assessment that will help in developing a proposed audit plan for the coming fiscal year. So thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Stewart.
I don't have any questions. It's great to have you on board. I have enjoyed a couple of meetings with you and looking forward to working with you and doing exactly what you just said, increasing transparency, efficiency, and help setting policy and that. So welcome, and I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Liken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And it was a real honor to be able to chair the selection committee and having Commissioner Farr as a member of the committee. One thing I will say, I think we were very blessed by the two finalists were just excellent finalists. But I want to say thank you very much for accepting the position, and I think your background is really, I think at the end of the day, your background was very, very strong here. We look forward to having you on board, and we look forward to moving forward. And I'm really pleased that you're already hitting the ground running and hitting with the, you know, meeting with the different departments and I think in throughout the county, I think it's great. And I really want to say thank you very much again for meeting with all the commissioners individually as well. And we look forward to working with you and look forward to your work here at Lane County. So again, thank you for accepting the position, and I know, and again, I want to say thank you to Commissioner Sorensen and Commissioner Stewart, who really pushed for this for the last couple of years, or actually longer than that. And I really appreciate their leadership on this. We finally have the position filled, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Shanda, you recently worked with the Secretary of State, Kate Brown, now Governor Kate Brown.
Yes.
And we discussed that during the interview process. But I wanted to point out something that really came out strongly to me during the interview process. And as Commissioner Liken has said, we had two great finalists for the position, the competition was tough, it really was. But you said something that really stood out to me, and I'm going to paraphrase it from my days in management in the private industry. I always taught people to try to catch people doing things right. And really, I'm paraphrasing what you said during the interview, is that a large part of your job is catching people doing things right and making certain that they continue to do things right. And that really stood out to me, because that really is a part, a large part of what a performance auditor does, is a performance auditor reports that things are going exactly as they should be going. And in the rare occasions when they're not, then reports how to correct the deficiencies or correct the policy that's in place. And you also mentioned that correction of any deficiencies in policies typically is from the ground up. People usually know how to make their job better and know how to do their job better. We don't have to invent it, and we don't have to go down to the detail level and say, "You should be doing this, you should be doing that." You know, and you conveyed that during the interview process, that you're catching people doing right, that you're making certain that as an organization, we continue on the great path, the strong path that we're headed down. I'd want to thank, once again, from my very first days on the commission, Commissioner Stewart and Commissioner Sorensen both were pushing for your position. They hadn't met you yet, but they wanted you on the job. So thank you and congratulations on the selection. Welcome to Lane County.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sorensen.
So I just want to clarify that it's Commissioner Stewart that gets the blame in the event this doesn't work out, and I get the credit if it does. That seems fair to me. I hadn't discussed it earlier, but that seems like a fair allocation to me. No, seriously, I just want to thank you for competing favorably for this and your experience in Salem, and also the way you're hitting the ground running, talking with the department directors and commissioners and other elected officials here in Lane County. And also, I think your collaboration with other performance auditors, I think that's a really strong thing within, you know, within Oregon. The concern I have is in how do we select what to do? You know, because it's one thing to talk about the generalities, and gee, it would be great if we had a performance auditor. Well, I can stuff that speech back in the briefcase because now you're here. But what are we going to do now, and how are we going to do it? And I think that there's just, you know, two ends of this continuum for me. One is kind of a low expectation, probably we could meet that expectation of auditing, you know, two or three of the largest departments, big 10, 20 million dollar chunks of money. And that's where the big money is, and that's a good thing. But then there's, you know, maybe on the other end is, you know, casting a net widely, asking employees and staff what they think should be looked at, and then getting a lot of suggestions and not knowing which ones to pursue. So I am very interested in how you're going to go about that phase. I think your idea of having a fraud hotline, to have people that suspect or are, you know, fearful that money is being misspent, and just making that an open process, I think that's a great idea. We have had, in the time I've been here, we have had some pretty bad incidents, and you know, by and large, all of our transactions are good, people are treated well, by and large, you know, money is well-spent, money well-managed. But we have had instances where employees have stolen money. We have had these instances. And so finding, finding out how to improve process, I think is really crucial. And last but not least, I think my attitude has changed about this position over time. I originally had a very idealistic idea that the performance auditor would save us money, hands down. I think my views have moderated a bit, and I think that a performance auditor may save us money, but will improve the effectiveness of the funding that we do have and how we spend it. So I'm really excited, and I do think that the Board of Commissioners has a big role in what you're doing and a big role in trying to help you reconcile all these different competing demands on your time. You know, here you are, you're one person, and true, you're a superwoman and you can do a lot. So it's not like just because you're one person, you can't do much. No, you can. But on the other hand, we have to help guide you in terms of how you spend your resources. And I think I would invite you to keep in mind, there are five of us up here, that we all have different points of view that change from time to time based upon new information. And I would just encourage you to have a regular check-in with the Board of Commissioners on your work. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So I just will say welcome also, and I think most of what I would have to say has already been said. Looking forward to, you know, your work here. And I still think I'm a little optimistic. I do believe you'll ultimately save the county money, just in the risk management portion of what a performance auditor does in preventing cost down the road. That, it's hard to say we absolutely saved this much money, but if, you know, you make sure we're paying attention to process and, you know, particularly, you know, how many hundreds of federal and state grants in various, do we have that each have their own rules? And, you know, that we're keeping all of our controls and processes in place, that we don't violate a grant condition somewhere down the road. You know, how much money does that save us? You know, it's hard to really calculate. So I do believe ultimately the position does save money. And I do believe that, you know, we've set up a system with the committee to direct your work, that hopefully a single commissioner won't be steering you in any particular direction, that he'll be, and you're developing currently, right now, a strategic plan to follow that will come back to the board as a whole to approve. And hopefully, we won't be running you here and there individually or moving you around until we approve that strategic plan and give direction and set up the membership of the Audit Committee, that you will be moving forward with pretty, you know, good directions, similar to us getting the strategic plan done early in Mr. Mokraheysky's term. So he had clear direction on where he wanted to go, and it wasn't something where he was changing with the wind. He has, you know, a mission and vision and goals to look towards, that he's guiding his actions. Will give you the same direction as we get that strategic plan approved. So your initial plan to do a strategic plan right away gets major thumbs up from me. So I really appreciate having you on and look forward to your work, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, one more. So thank you, Shanda. I'm just saying her name again so that particularly for me, I get it right. You would think with a name like mine, it would be easier to.
I got yours, right?
You did, I know. So we welcome you and look forward to our work together.
By the way, she was not reporting to you, so you can't.
Yeah, that's all right, I know. Yeah, she can say whatever she wants, right?
Also, I think Shanda Miller is a little easier when you think about it.
I agree.
Better than I made a name like that.
And we'll point out that this is now the third Miller that we have in important positions. We have Marcia Miller in Public Works, we have Mary Miller in Human Resources, and now we have Shanda Miller, our internal performance auditor. So one more update for you, if you'll indulge me just for a minute. It's been a heck of a, a couple of weeks for our Health and Human Services staff and our public health staff in particular, with the confirmed fourth case of meningitis at the University of Oregon. And I can tell you that I have seen, on several occasions, our Health and Human Services staff just work in overtime, round the clock, to address these issues in partnership with others in the community, certainly the University of Oregon, the State Health Department, and others. We have, as of Friday, and I think Ms. Gaffney will give you a more recent update, but as of Friday, I believe that we had provided about 3,500 vaccinations to individuals at the University of Oregon. I'm sure that number has increased as of yesterday, as the mass vaccination clinic got underway at the Mathew United Arena. I had an opportunity last Monday, the first day of the vaccination clinic at the Mathew United Arena, to go and see it, and really quite impressive how quickly our staff was able to move, in partnership with the University of Oregon and others, to set up this clinic very efficient, very professionally run. And, you know, for my part, I had very much a sense of pride, working for our organization and living in a community that has an operation that was able to jump on its feet so quickly and address a critical public health issue in our community so effectively. So I want to, on behalf of our organization, express our gratitude and appreciation to our Health and Human Services staff, particularly our public health staff, for the work that they've done. I think this also has presented an opportunity, as we've addressed this issue, to continue to inform and educate our public about the need for vaccinations in general and the important role that public health plays in all of our lives. So I want to welcome and bring up Karen Gaffney to the table. And we also have with us, under the opportunity to introduce to you another new employee to Lane County, Jocelyn Warren. Jocelyn joined, and hopefully I pronounced that name right.
Well done.
Joined Lane County as our public health manager on June, sorry, January 26, after serving as a professor of public health at Oregon State University. This was a position that we recruited for, and it was a rather extensive recruitment, as I believe, took place. And we're really excited to have Jocelyn on board. We're, just have heard wonderful things about her, and if you want to see Trial by Fire, I think this is probably it. So I'll pass it over to Karen to provide you with more of an introduction, and then hopefully an update over the last few days on the vaccination clinic.
Yes, definitely. I want to take a few moments to introduce Jocelyn. And as county administrator said, I know each of you have had a chance to meet her, but many members of the public might not have, or other employees across the organization. Jocelyn, we went out four times. Jocelyn, we went out four times to search before we were able to find her. And as is often the case, she was right here in our backyard. She's been a member of our Public Health Advisory Committee for a number of years and was commuting from Pleasant Hill to Corvallis to teach at Oregon State University in their School of Public Health. So she definitely has demonstrated a strong commitment to volunteering and improving the health in our community and offering you advice over the years. And now we have an opportunity to actually have her at the helm of our public health program. And from our perspective, it's a great opportunity for us to bring someone in, right from the research area, who knows the latest and greatest of evidence-based practices and what communities can do to improve their public health. So it's been a great opportunity for us to really be able to, to bridge that with bringing Jocelyn in. And as the administrator said, when she entered, things were going full bore in public health. I think we had measles her first week that she arrived and it really hasn't slowed down since then. So I'm going to, before we talk about our current public health situation, I just want to give Jocelyn a moment to talk about her first month or two here.
Yes, thank you. It's been very exciting. We have been in response mode for this last month in response to communicable disease, especially with the last few weeks with the University of Oregon and meningitis. And Karen will tell us more about that response. I do look forward to getting to know a little bit more, I've been meeting everyone. I can tell you that it's been a real pleasure to get to know the people that work in public health. They're a very committed and very talented group of people. That's been a real, a real pleasure. I've really enjoyed that very much. Being on the research side is, is really a different world and at the university, in an academic setting. And it's been, it's been really a delight to be able to be involved in practice. Research, you have to take a step back and have to be somewhat dispassionate and provide evidence and it's, you know, it's a lot about the science of public health delivery. But being able to be involved in public health practice and actual delivery is a very exciting place to be because you get to really work with the people that you're serving and be able to see the results on the ground. So that's been very exciting and I look forward to doing more of the work of the transformation of public health in our state moving forward, once we're no longer in response mode and we can look a little more towards the future of public health in our county. So that will be our, our next, our next challenge will be transforming public health when we see kind of what comes out of Salem upcoming and also working on accreditation for our Public Health Division. That will be a very exciting new accomplishment and endeavor coming forward. That's all. Thank you very much.
I don't know, you wanted to have questions for Jocelyn or should I just launch into our U of O report?
Mr. Farr.
I always take the opportunity whenever I can to mention our Community Health Improvement Program. And I'm sure that you're fully tuned into the chip and how that really is directing the future of how our Health Department operates, our excellent Health Department, might I add. And I'll talk a little bit later about the fact that I'm on NACO's Health Steering Committee. And when comparing what we do here locally in Lane County to what's being done around the nation in Health Department, County Health Departments, we really, it really pointed out to me, Karen, that we have an excellent, an excellent staff, an excellent strategic plan. And Jocelyn, you're joining a remarkable team.
I do agree.
What else?
I just want to say welcome.
Thank you.
And look forward to having you on the team and, and coming before the board and making presentations and the great work you're doing in the community. So, thank you.
I look forward to it.
Thank you very much for accepting this position and it sounds like you're going to drive fewer miles to and from your work site, which I know is actually a major factor in health outcome. And recently, I went on the University of Pennsylvania Age at Death Calculator, which is a free service of the University of Pennsylvania. And there's a long form and a short form. And on both the long, short form and the short form, they ask the number of miles that a person drives as being a factor in their longevity because of the stress of driving and also because of the risk of motor vehicle accidents. So I know that people in, in the public health profession are, are very adept at looking beyond maybe the definition of health that a layperson would give and are looking more at the overall picture. And that's maybe the distinction between public health and, and, you know, a service delivery model of I go to doctor, doctor says, looks like it's broken, I can fix it, where public health is much broader. I just want to encourage you to, to not entirely put distance between you and OSU and, and the idea of research and creativity and, and looking at ways to improve things. That said, you know, we have had a pretty horrible thing happen in our community where a university student dies and, and that results in an awareness that at least there's other threats, the other students, I think what is it now, up to four, four students total have been stricken with this. And so it's good to jump in and just get the job done. And I appreciate all the hard work that is going on to solve that or attempt to solve that problem. But meanwhile, I do think that public health has to be thinking about, as it, as, as I understand it, it's doing, to think about problems that we might think of as mental health or, or crime or transportation, driving, and those really part of an overall public health issue. And so thanks so much for willing to come in here and try to put the shoulder to the wheel and get some work done. Thanks.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you and welcome.
Believe me, there is no one happier than I am. Absolutely. So I know, all of you know that Health and Human Services moved into our incident management team about a week and a half ago in response to the outbreak of meningococcal disease at the University of Oregon. And so what that means for the public who may be viewing is that we really enter a pretty rigid system to manage that incident based historically, actually, on how wildland fire operates to manage an incident. And the University of Oregon, State Public Health have also moved into an incident management structure. So in our structure, I'm serving as the lead for that in the incident commander role. And actually, Jocelyn is in the role of liaison, so that means she's doing the majority of our work with our partners. So for instance, the University of Oregon, the pharmacists in the community and others who we need to coordinate with. So I do want to provide you a little bit of a status update and happy to answer any questions you might have. As you know, last week, Lane County Public Health was invited into Math U night arena to provide immediate vaccine clinics for students. And we managed those clinics for five days. And then beginning yesterday, the University of Oregon was able to field a team that's led by Safeway and Albertsons locally with support from Pfizer to do what we're calling the mass vax over there. They're able to vaccinate a much larger number of students in any given day. Our goal, the instruction we've given the University of Oregon from a public health perspective is that given these four cases, that they really need to try and vaccinate the entire undergraduate population in addition to any graduate students who are at particular health risk or who live in residence halls or Greek living. So that's really the population that we're drawing our ring around to try and create immunity there in order to stop the outbreak. As of this morning, I was getting texts from our planning chief who's adding up all the numbers from the pharmacies. We were at about 4,600 vaccinations provided in the community. And Math U night arena opened up again at 10 o'clock this morning. So hopefully those numbers are continuing to climb as you've been meeting today. And I'll be able to continue to provide you updates as we move forward. It's been a wonderful opportunity for us to work very closely with the University of Oregon, with State Public Health, with the Centers for Disease Control, all of whom have people on the ground at Math U night arena right now. Our public health staff continue to be over there providing access to some free vaccine that was donated for U of O students who don't have insurance or ability to pay. So costs should not be a barrier for anyone getting vaccinated. Our staff are providing those vaccines. We're also coordinating assisters for people who qualify for the Oregon Health Plan in order to get those benefits. And we're providing some on-the-ground support to the CDC, who's doing some work to really determine the effectiveness of the vaccine intervention. We have had no new cases, which is wonderful news. And truly what we hope for is that we won't have any new cases. Our staff and public health have done an amazing job with some support from state staff as well to do the epidemiological work around that of really understanding who is at highest risk because they've had high contact with those cases and then making sure that we get antibiotics prophylactically into those people. So that has absolutely helped contain the spread of the disease and will continue to do that if we get another case. And then I guess I would also give you some numbers around communications. Our challenge right now is to persuade mostly 18 to 22-year-olds to do something they don't want to do, which is to go get a shot. So communications is a big part of our toolkit at this point. And Jason Davis, our Public Information Officer, has been a point on that. He's contributed, or our staff have contributed to over 110 media stories, fielded hundreds of calls from concerned community members and maintained informational websites and numerous social media sources as well. And again, collaborating closely with the U of O and State Public Health. So I think I will stop there with just a huge thank you to the board. You, as you know, serve also as the Board of Health and so this is a critical role for you in that, in that role that you play in the community as the Board of Health. And, and just a huge thank you to all of the staff in Health and Human Services. This certainly is centered in our communicable disease team of public health, but in order for us to, to field an effective response, we've engaged not only the rest of public health, but staff from across Health and Human Services and volunteers from the community. In particular, I want to call out Eugene Springfield, Fire and EMS, who sent us some of their paramedics who were on light duty to administer vaccines last week at Math U night arena. People have really answered the call to, to help in this effort and I greatly appreciate that. Are there any questions you have for us?
Mr. Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not necessarily any questions. I just, Karen, I just want to say thank you. Just extraordinary leadership and really to you, your staff and, and all involved. I, in my opinion, this, this was really, while a tragedy occurred with a student, which by the way, I attended the Colorado-Oregon game the following day afterwards and now she passed. And that was probably one of the most touching surreal times I've ever been in Math U night arena when Don Essig called for a moment of silence and the entire arena, thousands of people went dead silent. And then after that, the students held up Lauren Jones's picture and it was extremely touching to see that. I mean, there was barely a dry eye in the, in the arena and then the basketball game started. But to me, this was, this was one of those moments where I think our Public Health Department absolutely shined. And, and I want to say thank you. Extraordinary leadership. I'm glad the University of Oregon was, was able to cooperate and really work with you on this. But great, just terrific. And this could have potentially eliminated more tragedies. And so, great thank you to all of you and the, and the staff for really coordinating and working this to, excuse me, my voice too, working this through and, and thank you so much.
Mr. Farr.
Thank you. I'd like to echo Commissioner Lichten's, thank you and congratulations on a job well done. You know, I was back in Washington DC as you were reporting on a daily basis, sometimes more frequently than on a daily basis, what was going on and the response at Lane County was having and the teamwork that, that Jocelyn, I believe you were in charge of the teamwork, the multi-team effort.
Karen is the incident commander.
Okay. She also, she called you out as the liaison, I think was the word she used. But, but it was able to, for me, I was able to demonstrate, once again, talking to other health departments from different counties throughout the nation, the response that we had to what could have, what was indeed a very serious incident, but what could have been so much broader spread if we hadn't been prepared. And I believe that based upon our Community Health Improvement Plan, our CHIP, which I will once again call out, that it really gave everybody in the Health Department, everybody here at Lane County, a clear view of how to respond. We weren't saying, well, this is happening, what do we do now? You were saying, this is happening, this is what we're doing. And it's just a remarkable report that I was able to make, that we were, while unfortunate, we were prepared for, for the outbreak and that you did, while the U of O, the headlines were kind of captured by the University of Oregon's response, it really was a county-wide response. And it was a, it wasn't just an incident that happened at the University of Oregon. The University of Oregon's a small capsule inside of this great big Connecticut-sized county that we have. And, and it really, it went from coast to coast. The day that the headline was the student's death at the University of Oregon, I was actually talking to the Assistant Director of CDC and she was already aware of it. And she was, she stated that she was confident that, and you fill in the blanks, that Lane County was going to respond adequately and that they would provide the kind of support and leadership that they evidently historically have done with Lane, Lane County. So it may be, I was sitting in Washington DC being so proud of the work that you're doing. While I was, you know, absolutely stunned and appalled and worried about what the consequences may be of a broad outbreak, very confident that, that we had the correct people in place, that, that Dr. Lutke was right on top of it, that you were right on top of it and that we, while we should be concerned, we need not be worried. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. And I appreciate you calling out the preparedness work. And certainly we've been in close contact with Linda Cook throughout this incident and use our countywide preparedness efforts as well as the work that public health has done. And it does make a difference to prepare. And I know Chair Bozovic, you talked about preparedness at the beginning of this year and I'm truly grateful that we invest that time, even though sometimes it feels difficult to pull people away for trainings and, and policies and procedures. But in an incident like this, for instance, being able very quickly over the course of a weekend to set up all of those clinics in Math U night arena, that's because we've done the work around preparedness. So it does pay off.
Mr. Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And a little piece of me has got to believe that, you know, what you've gone through, you talk about the measles incident and I believe you did some work on the what if, if Ebola was to come here, all these little pieces, I think have helped us, I would hope, to, to respond to this in a better way. So, great work on that. I don't know if I can reiterate what folks have said. I love some of the emails that I've been copied on that have been very eloquent to, to the great work that Karen, you're doing in leading this and the staff and our partners in, in all different matters, whether it's the University of Oregon or sure the different hospitals and everybody that's involved or different pharmaceutical supplies and places that are giving shots. I mean, to think about trying to mobilize and with a goal, I assume a goal, I read it in the paper, of 22,000 vaccinations or more. I mean, that's, that's, that's a huge number. I mean, countywide, that's about 5% of our population. If you make it, you narrow it down to the metro areas, 10% of the population, I mean, that's a lot of people to deal with. And then not only just trying to coordinate that, but I'm sure that there's, if there's 22,000 students, there's probably been five to 10 panic phone calls from parents wondering how they're going to do. I mean, you just start thinking about the magnitude of this. And, and so, great work. I really appreciate the updates. And, and besides all that, you're able to assist in other areas and working with a difficult situation. I'm greatly appreciative of your assistance in that and being able to show great attention to both matters. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So, you know, it was interesting, I spent this morning on the drive-in, I listened to the university's emergency manager, and I can't remember his name, he interviewed on KP&amp;W. And he gave the, basically the 4,600 number. He had, he had a pretty accurate number. Yeah, he had a pretty accurate number. But what's interesting is, you know, this isn't, you know, a lot of people don't understand is this particular strain of meningitis, the vaccine for it was just recently approved and is very new. It was actually a strain there was no vaccine for previously. And because it's so new, it hadn't actually gone through the process at the CDC to be approved in this fashion of mass vaccination in the event of an outbreak. You know, so that that use hadn't actually been gone through a committee. So one of the things he talked about was how they managed to get this meeting last Thursday and get that committee's approval for the mass vac clinic to start the following Monday, and at the same time, working with Pfizer and several different local pharmacies or chains of pharmacies, you know, corporate pharmacies, to get with all the various insurance providers that provide insurance in Oregon, to get them to approve reimbursement for this brand-new vaccine. And the effort that took to put all that together, so that, come in. The effort that took. Yeah. The effort that took to put all that together just amazes me. I mean, that's probably, you know, people were like, "Well, why did it take them a whole week to set up the mass vaccination clinics?" They couldn't go any faster. They had to wait for the CDC committee. They had to wait to get all this communication done. And I really want to commend, you know, I think it's Walgreens, Safeway, and there's one other I'm missing.
Albertsons.
Albertsons pharmacies that have taken this effort to make sure that anyone that gets a shot through them, even if their insurance fails to reimburse, there's a contract with the university, they will get, they won't be liable for the cost of the vaccination. So it makes it really easy for a student to go to one of those three pharmacies and know they won't be on the hook financially. And having that worked out up front was pretty amazing. They probably would have had more chains involved, but at just the time to get that done was pretty, you know, pretty significant. And to have Pfizer work so closely with those insurance companies and pharmacies, and Pfizer to provide free vaccine to the university to cover those students that have no insurance. You know, these are major corporations. We're talking about Walgreens and Pfizer and Albertsons and, you know, it's just Safeway. Coming together in a crisis to help manage, you know, a significant health outbreak, you know, health incident. You know, sometimes those folks, those particular companies, you know, get a bad name, you know, and including the insurance industry. Everybody jumped together in less than a week, put all this together. So today, they open these mass vaccination clinics. It takes away all those roadblocks, you know, everything except for getting your arm pricked for the students. You know, the easier we can make it for folks to actually get the vaccination, the better it'll be. And I, you know, we get some things back from you about you guys have opened a clinic, this is the number of people that have vaccinated today, that didn't talk about all that background. I was so grateful I got to hear him today, so I understood some of that background that, you know, I'm sure you all were involved in, even down to the fact that it's the dreaded Beavers Pharmacy School that's providing the, folks actually do the inoculations at Matthew Night Arena to those Duck students, you know. And I wonder if there was some OSU connection there that got that. But, you know, those are the things that are just, you know, happening in the background. You know, we get reported very clinical things, like there were 347 students vaccinated today. And this is, you know, the, you know, we don't hear about all that other stuff and how cutting-edge this whole thing really is. This is the first, you know, meningitis B, if I'm correct, right?
That is correct.
Outbreak that's being treated with this particular vaccine in this way that I know of.
Well, what's true is the vaccine hadn't been FDA-approved.
Right.
When it was used, Princeton and UC Santa Barbara also had outbreaks where
Right.
They did mass vaccinations. But yes, this is the first one since the approval has come through.
Right. So it's a very, you know, we're on the cutting edge of public health here in Lane County in providing this. And one of the questions that got asked by the interviewer that I don't think really came out very well was, "Why, if there's only four cases, are we inoculating 22,000 people?" And I don't think he did a good job. You know, he mentioned just how the mortality rate and, not only the mortality rate, but the permanent disability rate for meningitis and how serious of an illness it is. But that still didn't quite get through to the interviewer that, you know, what he didn't really describe well was the demographic that gets meningitis is college students. It's an age demographic issue. It's kind of, you know, because he was comparing it to how many people died of the flu last year in the state of Oregon, you know, and why aren't we more concerned about inoculating college students for the flu? Well, the college students aren't necessarily the population that dies from the flu, unless it's, you know, the Spanish flu strain or something like that. There are strains that will hit that population, but the more recent ones haven't really been in on that demographic. But meningitis is so specific to that age demographic, not only college students, but military recruits. It's an issue in those close-living quarters. And that's why it's such a critical response, and that understanding how harmful a disease it is and how that population is so vulnerable. And that's why there's a need for this massive response to an outbreak. And the way it's been managed by the staff here in cooperation with the university and the state and the CDC has been exemplary. And I was going in and out of the internet version of radio silence on my vacation down to Mexico, because there's not always even cell coverage where I was. And when I did get connected and get updates, it was, I was just always confident that things were being handled well. And I really appreciate the work that you all did. And I do want to mention that on May 8th, we are, the board is actually going to have a work session where we're going to get ICS 402 training for folks, something that I pushed early on in the year. So we'll understand a little bit better when you mention you're playing a part of the liaison. I understand that because my previous life, I went through ICS training at a water and electric utility, but I don't think many people really understand what the liaison's role in an incident command structure is. So it'd be nice to have that.
Commissioner Stewart.
I just had one more question about the, well, I guess I'll call it the tragedy at the University of Oregon, and whether you have some information that you could educate me and the board and the community on it, and that is, when we have an outbreak, which we don't know is an outbreak, because we've only got one or two people that have this disease, what is the relationship between the public health official who is, you know, you have one person with this disease, you get notified of it, but then a patient, again, back to the difference between public health, overall concern with the public health versus a person with a medical problem who goes to a doctor, who sends them to a hospital, who treats them, and treats them for the symptoms that they present, but they go home and die? What is the, what is the relationship between the treating health community and the public health community to try to avoid that, to try to cut that off so that the medical providers are given the same information that you have about a disease like this?
We have a number of tools, and you're right, there is a
And maybe something happened here that was not according to protocols, or maybe it was all according to protocols, and that's how we identified that it is a outbreak.
I have a lot of questions inside that question. So my disclaimer will be that throughout this outbreak, we're not talking about the care of any individual, but I am happy to talk with you about what our system looks like. We have a tool we call the Health Alert Network, which again is part of our preparedness system, where all of the medical providers in our community are set up in advance to be able to receive email messages and fax messages anytime our health officer has a health alert. So we have activated that numerous times since our first case, which was January 16th, to be able to push that exact information out to providers. And so that includes the individual providers as well as hospital emergency departments, clinics, so they get that information from us. And we use that tool a lot, actually, to push information out. And certainly, we also answer questions. So in the reverse, our staff in Communicable Disease regularly get inquiries from providers about protocols and practices. So we absolutely use that tool to help bridge between the community health and an individual health. Because you're right, an individual provider is obligated anytime there's a reportable disease to notify public health right away, that that's what they found, so that
They did that.
Mm-hmm. So then we're able to activate our systems. And again, the response level often is dictated by how many cases you have. In this particular, in meningococcal, the guidance from the CDC is that once you get three unrelated cases, and I know I've talked with you as the Board of Health about that before, that triggers a different level of response. So actually, the case of the student at the University of Oregon who passed away was our third unrelated case, because two of the earlier cases were related. So that was the piece that triggered this larger vaccination ring. But prior to that, we absolutely, if we have meningococcal disease in the community, we're letting providers know that, because we need people to watch for that in the community. And I also just want to circle back around Commissioner Bozovic's comment about the flu and underscore that, because absolutely, the flu is a public health concern every year. And so I want to plug that for people in the future thinking about flu shots. We absolutely need to protect people against the flu. I know we talked about that during our Ebola planning session, that really, every year, public health is very concerned about vaccinating people against the flu.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for the hard work, and thank you for spending so much time with us when I know you've got 1,000 other things to be doing.
I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to just say that we're going to continue to bring to you in future meetings examples of new employees that we're bringing into the organization to highlight what I think is really, for me and for all of us in this organization, the single most important thing that we do, make sure that we're recruiting and retaining talented individuals in our organization, help lead us into the future. We have examples of new people who've come on board, and we have a lot of examples of employees who've been in the organization for a long period of time and who are doing great work that you don't always hear from. You often hear from the department heads and managers in the organization, but we also want to highlight employees from the front line on up through our organization who are doing great work. And I think it's true that we have leaders throughout the organization in every position, that we have people who are doing great work, and you heard examples of that today in public health. And they're leaders, and they're leading all the time in the decisions that they're making and the work that they're doing to serve our community. We have plenty of areas for improvement, and we will acknowledge those and work on continuous improvement where we need it, but we also will acknowledge the outstanding employees that we have doing great work. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. So moving on to commissioners' business, are there any announcements from the commissioners? Mr. Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Commissioner Farr and I both attended NACO last week, and I just want to give a brief report on some conversations I had up on the Hill. Met with Senator Wyden, and also a group of us met with Congressman DeFazio and Congressman Walden and kind of get an idea of where we are in the secure rural schools issue. And as we know, Senator Wyden introduced a bipartisan reauthorization of SRS, a three-year, based on 2011 levels. And so it's a little bit more than what we've been receiving the last couple of years. The total amount of that for the three years is a little over $1 billion, so it's quite a bit when you're looking at the overall. Senator Wyden did tell me that while offsets have not been identified as of yet, that the fact that he has two Republican co-sponsors, Crepo and Rich, I think, both from Idaho, I believe, Senator, or Commissioner Stewart, say?
I'm not sure.
I think that's, I think they're both from Idaho. Anyway, he did tell me that Senator Hatch is supportive and that he and Senator Hatch are working on the offsets on this as we speak. On the House side, it's probably a little more challenging lift to do the three-year. Congressman DeFazio and Congressman Walden are confident there's a one-year. Congressman DeFazio did tell us that he's really going to push for a two-year, but obviously not at the 11 levels, probably more the 13 levels. And Senator Wyden did tell me that, listen, if the House doesn't, is not able to move forward on that, if we can move forward on the Senate and move it to the House and just get it to a vote, then maybe, if not, he clearly is open to meeting them, in a sense, meeting the House to make sure that there's something in place. Obviously, I would suggest that any sort of payment would be happening after we adopt a budget. So that's probably what we're looking at. Right now, the budget's going to be zero, and that's decisions that the board will have to make based on, you know, if we want to take the risk on reserves, understanding that those dollars would be coming back to us, and that's a decision we'll have to make. But I just want to give a quick update on those conversations. So again, I think the best terminology we can use is cautiously optimistic, and that's probably about it at this point in time. But I just want to give a brief report on that and just on the conversations that we're able to have. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a little follow-up on, I was with Commissioner Lichen on the NACO trip last week, and prior to that, the United Front trip. Won't go into too many details. Commissioner Lichen, I had a meeting also with Senator Wyden, and he was less optimistic than I'd like to have heard, but I think Commissioner Lichen probably had a deeper conversation with Senator Wyden. On the United Front trip, a couple of things I'll point out that really stood out as a highlight. I met with David Montoya, who's the Deputy Assistant Secretary of Veterans Affairs, USDVA. And the first thing he said when I came to sit down in the room with him was, "You guys have done a great job in Lane County." Now, that told me that somebody, that he'd done, A, he'd done his homework, but B, there was something good for him to see when he did his homework, the fact that with our veterans' affairs and our veterans' housing issues, we are kind of leading the nation a little bit. We have the support of the Veterans Affairs Administration and the Secretary himself. That's the one highlight that I'll point out from the United Front trip. The other one, actually, a second one from that is I met with Mayor Christine Lundberg and a man called Dr. World Knee on multi-storied wooden structures. Commissioner, Mayor Lundberg is really interested in this, and I think that we'll see the future of advanced wood products and multi-storied wood structures right here in Lane County. She is very hot on that. I'm going to provide a more full report on the United Front trip. On the, on the NACO trip, I mentioned earlier that I'm on the Health Steering Committee, National Health Steering Committee, and we discussed a lot of issues, and I'll give a full report on that. I did have an opportunity, one of the highlights, probably the highlight, was I met with Senator Merkley, and he and I had breakfast in the Senate dining room, which was a nice eye-opening experience, but significantly, had a chance to chat with him for about an hour and a half about a lot of different affairs in Lane County, not the least of which was secure rural schools, which he has less of a direct impact on than Senator Wyden, but he is obviously keeping attuned to it. And he and I also talked about veterans' affairs. Once again, I'll give you a full report on that. Thank you.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I would mention that during our break, Commissioner Lichen and I got to meet with Representative from Swanson, the mill site there in Springfield. He wanted to share with us their plans to rebuild. They have made the commitment to rebuild. There'll probably be a decision point come before the board, I think, maybe in April or May, but they hope to submit their application for permits in April and get started. Looks like, I think, if I remember rightly, about 150-plus employees, a little bit fewer than they had before, but they're going to move into a new, a little more automated line, and also, I think, a line, and also, I think, a little bit different product, a product that's used for concrete forms. So excited that they're moving forward with that. I think they're going to get started with hiring some folks here fairly soon, because there's some of their operation. They can start manufacturing, merchandising some product through some of the facility that didn't get damaged in the mill. So that was a really encouraging meeting, also knowing that I think most, if not all the employees that worked from before were placed. So in essence, a lot of these jobs are going to be coming forward unless folks move back, are going to be new jobs in our community. So, good news.
Great. Any further announcements? With that, then, we'll move into agenda team requests, and I have two that I'd like to bring forward. The first one actually was Commissioner Sorenson's, and it was one that we postponed a few weeks back because Commissioner Liken wasn't here, and then I think Commissioner Farr wasn't going to be here the following week, so we decided to bring it back today when we have a full Board present. And that was whether or not the Board wanted to have a future agenda item to consider an ordinance on the topic of Lane County not cooperating with the federal government on illegal portions of the National Defense Authorization Act that was brought to us by the folks at Panda. And I think Commissioner Sorenson wanted to have that placed on the agenda. We kind of had a two-two split on that, so we didn't really want to move forward without a full Board here. So I'd like to go back to that, and if Commissioner Sorenson, you want to speak to that, then maybe we can see if we have three head nods.
Well, throughout most of 2014, we were working on the topic of whether we would have an ordinance or not, that parallels or mimics what other cities and counties and states are doing to stand up for the rights and freedoms that Americans have under our federal constitution. And some of those cities and states have done it, cities, counties, and states have done it differently, but the, I thought the focus was on whether we could find a appropriate way to have an ordinance and have a law of Lane County that would, you know, add some further information to the public as a process of having the public hearing. I think we had a big public hearing back in April where the commissioners heard from the public, and we were moving toward it. I think that in a basketball sense, the clock ran out on the calendar year work for the Board, and we didn't really finish that work. I think that if there's an interest on the part of the commissioners in having a work session to get an overview of what other governments, state, county, and city have done, then I think that would aid us in advancing this. It might result, if we had a work session on what those other states and committees were doing, it might result in us saying, no, we didn't want to pursue it further. But I don't think we ever really got much of a review. In fact, I think it's fair to say, we asked for a review and didn't get a review of what these other communities and states were doing. So that would be my request, is we think of this as a work session, what are other communities doing? Do we want to move forward with doing something that would, that would show the public that we're not going to use our resources to cooperate with a law that many people believe is unconstitutional and does, in fact, intrude on the rights of American citizens? So that's really how I would narrow this down, is let's get some work session here where we're talking about these other enactments by other cities, counties, and states that have confronted this problem.
Any discussion? Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm interested in seeing more formally what other jurisdictions have done, and see if it is something that is appropriate to us. I know we've had a report from Public Safety on our end with concerns about pursuing such a statement or an ordinance, or whatever it may be, but just, I'm interested in seeing and hearing what other jurisdictions have done.
Commissioner Stewart. Thanks, Mr. Chair. We had a Legislative Committee meeting Friday, I believe it was, that talked about what's going on at the state level. At the present time, there's no, there has not been an introduction of a bill that Mr. Kyler could find at the State of Oregon. There has been multiple bills introduced in other states. I believe, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Liken, but I believe there's only one state that actually moved forward with action in adopting a direction at a state level. And communication that we've received, we've received multiple updates, I believe, from legal counsel as far as ordinances that have been passed by counties. And if my recollection is correctly, there's only been one county in California that actually passed an ordinance, and it was quite interesting when you look at it, they didn't adopt any type of a penalty portion to it. It was just an adoption of an ordinance that made a statement with essentially no corrective action if something was done. So to date, those are all updates that, at least most of them are, that we've received. We could certainly give you or ask Mr. Kyler to, it's going to be a part of the report. It is Legislative Committee update. When he comes before the Board, he's going to give you an update of what other states are doing. So at this point, I'm, you know, as I harken back to the conversation we had at the end of the year, it was, you know, some pretty good information was presented to us and concerns with, you know, our own labor units, with the prosecuting attorney's concerns, with concerns with our different departments that receive resources from the federal government, do we suddenly become non-compliant with those grants that we've received? You know, and I harken back that we've adopted probably one of the strongest resolutions in the United States against the NDAA. So I'm, I believe, other than that update that's coming before us, I'm not supportive of any additional work on this.
Any other comments? Commissioner Liken.
I, thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that Commissioner Stewart pretty well said what was on my mind as well. I think we have a good, solid resolution in place, and I think at this point in time, I'm satisfied where we are. And I would agree, I think Mr. Kyler, maybe during the Legislative Committee report that Mr. Kyler can report on what's out there so far, but I would concur with Commissioner Stewart. I believe we've done what we can do, and then we can, I think having the report come back to the Board would be satisfactory.
Commissioner Sorenson.
I wrote an email to the Tenth Amendment Center, which is a, which is an organization that is all about standing up for the Tenth Amendment, which is one of the original proposed 12 amendments to our U.S. Constitution, only which 10 were approved at the time. But those 10 amendments include the Tenth Amendment, which prohibits the federal government from intruding on the powers of states. And so two years ago, almost three years ago, the State of Virginia passed in their state legislature, a state legislation, and that resulted in other governments, such as California and Alaska, as well as then more local governments passing non-cooperation, And so I think that we're seeing more local officials stand up to this and say, this isn't right, and they're not going to allow their tax dollars to be used in cooperating with it. And given the justifiable concern that people have about their privacy rights and about the overreach and potential of overreach of the federal government, we do have a system of federalism that allows local governments to protect the rights that American citizens have. And I just, I don't understand what happened between the time our Board members heard from a large number of people, and we were, it seemed like we were moving in the right direction, and then it just sort of died. And I just, I guess I'm saying, it shouldn't die, we should keep working on it. And it is something that is an appropriate thing for Lane County to do, to make sure that our resources aren't used inappropriately.
So I'll put myself in the queue here for a minute. Just want to make sure we described the Tenth Amendment correctly, basically. It's, the powers not delegated to the United States by the Constitution nor prohibited by it to the states, are reserved to the states respectively and to the people. It's the, it's probably the most clear indication that the Constitution's a doctrine of enumerated powers, and that only the powers described in the Constitution are allocated to those, to the federal government. Everything else is reserved to the states and the people. But, you know, my, my interest in this, you know, is to protect the rights of our citizens. At the same time, we have to balance the protection of those rights with our duty to, our oath to uphold the laws of the United States and also to our fiscal responsibilities to the citizens. You know, Commissioner Sorenson is right, there was a lot of momentum moving towards an ordinance that was going to basically say we were going to not enforce any actions under Sections 1021, 1022 of the NDAA. But as we heard back from legal counsel, reports about what that action would bring about, and as we, and we started hearing more and more, and we asked more questions, like, will this affect our bargaining units? Will this affect the bar licenses of our district attorneys, our assistant district attorneys? Will this affect our ability to get federal grants? Will this, and we kept asking further and further questions. The last update we got from legal counsel, I believe, was in December of last year, was so devastating about the negative impacts of a county ordinance that there was no request from any Board member for any further action at that point. That's why it kind of seemed to die off, was, you know, the description of it was going to be a bargainable issue, which makes it, if we implement the ordinance, means we're in bargaining with seven bargaining units, and the cost of that bargaining, that issue. The issue that it was possibly going to violate, you know, put our assistant DAs in an issue where they might actually be violating their bar license, and in fact, it might actually impact Commissioner Sorenson's bar license to pass such an ordinance. At least that was the opinion of legal counsel at the time. The fact that we could actually, because there hadn't been a court of standing that had ruled it unconstitutional yet, that we actually could be connected, could be potentially liable personally for passing such an ordinance, because we were exceeding our powers as commissioners. You know, all of those issues were brought to us by legal counsel, and at that time, we basically looked at each other in stunned silence and let it die. And I'm not really willing to bring it back for a work session this time, because we, nothing's changed about those legal opinions. Unless somebody can bring me, you know, sufficient legal counsel that says our legal counsel was completely wrong, and this is what, you know, the balance to that is, I can't look at that and go, wow, I'm really willing to keep moving forward with this, even if some other jurisdiction in some other state which might have completely different liability and legal restrictions on them has done something else. And there's, and to me, I think just hearing back from our Legislative Committee in the future about either what the state might be doing, or if there's any additional changes is sufficient at this time. I don't think we need to schedule a work session. So that's my opinion at this point. And I know there's people out there that will be unhappy, that's my opinion, but I believe that we have to balance our duties as a commission. And part of our oath of office is to uphold the laws of the United States and the State of Oregon. And right now, this has not been ruled by a court of record as unconstitutional. So it puts us in a very strange position to take our own personal opinion about constitutionality and act it as an ordinance. You know, because at this point, it's our opinion, not the actual ruling of a court. So difficult place to be in, and difficult balance for the Board, but I don't support setting up another work session until we hear something different, either from legal counsel or Legislative Committee, that there's been a change. And I'm seeing at least two head nods to the side of me. I thought I heard you express you weren't interested, so I believe that this item will be tabled this time for lack of three assents from the Commission. So that moves us on to the next agenda item I wanted to bring forward, which is the River Road Parks District has been looking at possible solutions to their longevity and funding issues as annexations peel into their tax base. And one of the things they're looking at is a possible expansion of Park District, and having some discussions with even the City of Eugene about how that might look, and, you know, whether it would be a small expansion just out to Santa Clara, or would it be something that the City of Eugene gets involved in? But they're looking at that as a possible solution, using special districts and annexation into that as a possible way of dealing with their long-term financial viability. The opportunity that it offers the Board is, in order to do that, it may take an amendment of the Metro Plan. And one of the issues the Board has talked about as a possible solution to public safety funding is a public safety district of some kind, which would also take an amendment of the Metro Plan. And Commissioner Farr and I sat in on a meeting at the Park District several months ago, where they brought some folks in from the Portland area, and I think the Bend area, to discuss their special Parks Districts and how they function and provide it well, as well as the folks from La Mala Lane, and how that's functioned over the years. And it's an interesting solution that they're looking at, and they would like to have a work session joint with us to talk about those possible solutions and whether there's an opportunity to work together on this. And I would like to see if I can get a couple head nods here and see if we might schedule that as a future work session. Commissioner Sorenson.
I think this is a good idea, and it does, it does provide us with information that could be useful in some of the up-and-coming discussions that we may be having over fire safety and also law enforcement and public safety. Because the same issues that are involved in this recreation district in terms of compression, in terms of the authority to form a district, the possible clash between a land use decision and a, of long ago, and a current need now, I think all that warrants further discussion.
Excellent. I would agree. And I see concurrence from both Commissioner Stewart and Commissioner Liken, so it looks like we have at least four commissioners willing to add that to the future agenda, so that will be added to the list. Are there any other future agenda items? Commissioner Liken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So yesterday, I believe it was yesterday, the Oregon House voted 56 to 2 on a, this is part of the e-cigarette issue, and something this county did as well. And I was suggesting that maybe what we should do is not pursue the county piece, but to work closely. work in closely conjunction with the legislature. And I was outvoted and I, that's part of democracy and I was fine with that. But the legislature, it's the House that voted 56 to 2. I believe the Senate is taking it up either later this week or next week. The guess is the Senate will also vote overwhelmingly on this. What I'm going to ask is if it's appropriate for, I don't know if the legislative committee, but at least to have Mr. Kyler monitor this, because I believe this may include a local government preemption in the law. So I think it's probably appropriate that we take a look at this because if county passed, the county passed something similar, what was that, a couple of months ago? And if it's now a preemption involved, I think it's appropriate that we at least have Mr. Kyler monitor where this goes from here. And I don't know if that's the appropriate venue or is it more appropriate to put it into the legislative committee and we can have Sarah put together one. But this is a little, this because the fact that Lane County already passed the ordinance and county, that would include unincorporated Lane County. But now you have the legislature, it looks like they're coming forward with a statewide law in place and so, and if it includes a preemption, I guess that's the question I have is, is where do we go from there? And so I, so I'm asking my colleagues what they feel like is the best venue. Is it more appropriate for Mr. Kyler just to monitor or is appropriate to move it into the legislative committee? And I'll, I'll look to my senior colleagues on this one, so.
I just want to point out that there is, right now, scheduled for about, it looks like May 5th, tentatively for HHS to come back to the board with an update on the tobacco ordinance.
Okay.
And to update the board on the conversations they've had with various cities about potential amendments to the ordinance. And I believe, you know, we're looking at amending the ordinance anyway in the future, so we may, maybe part of that amendment process.
That's funny, okay.
Maybe to actually make it, comply with whatever the legislature passes this year, so.
Well, that, and that, pardon me, so if that's the case, if that's coming before the board anyway, that might, that might make sense. But if the Senate's also going to vote, and obviously we don't know when it'll be signed by the governor. But if it's beforehand, would that affect this agenda item or is this appropriate just for this agenda item to come before the board? Even though, let's say, it was passed by the House and the Senate and the governor already signed, well, no, I don't think the governor would sign that soon, but you never know, I guess. So I'm just, so if it's already scheduled for May 5th, I mean, I'm fine with that. But I'm just trying to get an idea of if we need to have something, you know, at least Mr. Kyler monitoring this sooner or whatever the case is. I'm just going to look at my colleagues for their terrific advice. Mr. Mokrheyski, I don't know if you have additional information you'd like to provide too. I'm going to look to my colleagues for this one.
So Steve, did you want to have a comment first and then Mr. Tink?
I mean, I certainly defer to the board, but the only comment I would make is, I think this is clearly something that we need to monitor, given the impact, you know, the board has already adopted an ordinance related to this. So I think it fits right into something that even without formal board direction, now whether the board wants to add it to the legislative agenda or monitor it separately, I, you know, I guess I would defer similarly to how you've handled that in the past. But certainly something that we should and will monitor and update the board on.
Commissioner Sorensen and Commissioner Farr.
I think that things move rather rapidly and one of the problems that we often have in dealing with, with what's going on in Congress or what's going on in the legislature is, you know, we have, we have, we have two periods of time here. We have too early and too late. So, and I think the public has the same frustration on cities and counties. So I think that if we have things that our public health people want to get in there and anything we've learned from the folks that are being regulated, because I've had a number of meetings with them as well, is to convey that to the legislature right away. Because if they've already had a House vote, unless there's a big difference between the House and Senate, you're, and you get a conference committee, you have the idea that you could have new ideas, you know, brought in, that, that, that train is pretty well down the track. And the best time, the next best time to get your ore in the water will be after this legislative session ends, before the committee chairs have structured their interim work session. So that's like now or at the earliest September to start working on the impact of a preemption, if that's what's in there. Maybe that would be a good thing. I know that there's considerable concern on the part of the public health side that if they have some, some things that are working, then, you know, let's get it applied statewide. And similarly, on the, on the retailer's end of things, if, if a retailer is doing business in two or three different counties or two or three different cities, it would be a lot easier if they had one rule within the state to comply with. So if it's that far down the track, it's pretty obvious that, you know, we better get our view in right now because if we have an update in May, the update may be the governor signed a law that preempts all cities and counties from doing these things. It's maybe okay, but it's really, that legislative process is moving faster than ours. Usually it's the other way around, but now it's, they're moving faster than we are.
So I think that this is kind of a dual track. I think that legislative committees should pay attention to it as we move along, but at the same time, we still need to be looking at what we need to do to get our ordinance to be, you know, acceptable to cities to participate in it. And I want to be clear that the e-cigarette, you know, where they're going to basically prohibit cities and counties from taking action is mostly on the regulation of e-cigarettes, not necessarily the licensing of distributors, which is the second half of that ordinance. So there, we may have to toss out all of our, our rules on vaping in the, you know, the ordinance to get it to be compliant, but we may still be able to license sellers of vaping equipment. Does that make, you know, so how we look at that and tracking all that, I think is very important. So I think both legislative committee and the folks at HHS will just have to be watching both of those and we'll probably hear from Alex several times over the next month or so, I'm sure, with legislative updates. Pat?
Yes, it's, I still 2546A engrossed. It passed yesterday and it really is predominantly toward banning sales to minors, which is a part of what we have as an ordinance. I've not seen anything on preemption at this point in time. I think Alex can keep track of it.
I think it has some restrictions on where you can actually vape also, you know, some of those, those sort of things, which we didn't have in our ordinance. Commissioner Stewart?
So just my, my thoughts on it, I agree that Alex will be monitoring this because it's going to impact the actions we've already taken, so I don't know if it needs to be specifically called out to the legislative committee. The second is, is we're scheduling another board work session and potential change in ordinance. I have heard from multiple parties and have meetings scheduled, pretty much with folks that are concerned with the licensing component of this and, and I do have concerns and have shared those with staff. So I think we're going to probably make an attempt, hopefully, to adjust those. So I think we've got it covered with our, our future agenda item and monitoring of what's taking place now.
Great. Any other future agenda items?
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Thank you very much. I have been following the exchange between Mr. Jensen, who wrote an extensive letter dated February 15, 2015. And this letter was delivered to all of the commissioners. It dealt with the costs of healthcare and health insurance that Lane County was spending. And he points out in his letters that, that $23 million was spent in the FY14 budget, reduced to $23.9 million. So that's a pretty substantial amount of money that Lane County is spending on, on health insurance. And then Mr. Mokrheyski wrote a letter on March 2, back to Mr. Jensen, commenting on some of the ideas that Mr. Jensen had had to reduce the costs of health insurance. I know that the, that letter also stated that Lane County is, and administration is working to address some of the issues that he raises about the large number of dollars that we're spending on healthcare. And in particular, points to a provision in the Affordable Care Act that kicks in in 2018 that imposes a, an additional fee on Lane County and other employers that have what I would call good health insurance programs. So my point in bringing this up in today's meeting is, is to request that Mr. Mokrheyski and Ms., Ms. Edwards, not Ms. Miller, Ms. Edward, Marsha Edwards, who's our Human Resources Director and really the point person on this issue, to have a work session with the Board of Commissioners on the issue of health insurance, the cost of health insurance, what can be done by means of self-insurance, by means of a greater emphasis on wellness, what can be done to try to lower, and then at a minimum, get the budget people in here, get Christine in here to see how are we going to, a plan for this increased cost? Because apparently this is something, I would call it, non-debatable. It's, it's in the law unless the law gets tossed out, which I guess is always a potential. But the idea is to have a work session on this as this is a over 20, almost $25 million item in our budget. So that's my request, is to get a work session on health insurance costs and get it going so that we're ahead of the curve on understanding what our administration is doing and allow them some opportunity to tell us what they're doing to try to adjust these, this $25 million expense in our budget.
Thank you. Mr. Mokrheyski, do you?
Mr. Chair, yes. Well, just, yeah.
We actually, I think, told them we'd be done by noon and that's why we're starting to hear that now. We still have to go into executive session, so.
Okay. I'll just provide a brief update. And what I would submit to you is that I was with our staff and our benefit consultants for about an hour and a half yesterday. We are focused like a laser on this issue. It's a high, as I said in my letter, Mr. Jensen, top priority for me as we look at our budget for next year, it is over about $21 million in claims is what we have, what we had last year. We believe that we can not only stabilize, but my goal is to reduce our health insurance costs for next year. I think we have an obligation to do that, to look at all of our internal cost drivers before we start reducing service levels further. So our plan is to submit a budget to the board and the Budget Committee on May 5th that proposes a number of changes to the way in which, and our intent at this stage is not to directly impact the benefit provided to employees, but to look at opportunities to reduce administrative costs and other things. So I'd ask that we have the opportunity to continue to develop that plan. Certainly, and our, my concept was that we would bring that forward to the board in May as part of the budget process, as it's a significant expense item within all of our funds across the organization and have that more detailed discussion and our proposals and solutions that we're putting forward as part of the budget process.
So is there anyone interested in a separate work session or do we want to just have this move along as part of the budget process at this time?
I'm in the budget process.
Yeah. I'm, I'm fine with the budget process, somewhat. I'm also a little bit concerned about a separate work session might be even construed as an issue for our bargaining units if we're discussing one particular benefit of theirs and possible benefit changes publicly like that. I have a little bit of concern about how that, how that works sometimes, but I think dealing with, through the budget process might be the best way.
One of the advantages of having a work session on this is that we would be able to invite people from our unions or our department directors or other people that are, that are involved in all this. And if it's in the context of a work session where there's no action being taken, that there's discussion, there's knowledge being exchanged, otherwise I think it's fair to say that this 25 or $20 million expense will be brought up in the context of each budget and there really isn't an opportunity unless we have a separate session to talk about this, there's really not another way. Now, if the idea is to wait and have a recommendation to make a change, obviously, is, will that be in the budget? Will there be a change in what we're doing in the proposed budget? Are you anticipating that?
That's, that's my intent, yes. And I would also share with you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, that our goal was, again, we've done this on a number of issues where I like to bring you a solution that has been well thought out and packaged as opposed to something, and, you know, my view is you appoint an administrator and I hire staff to look at these issues and then bring you solutions. And so that's our intent and I think we've done that in some other cases. My, my intent additionally was, in addition to meeting with each member individually of the Budget Committee prior to May 5th, to just sort of talk about the overall perspective of the budget that we'll be introducing on May 5th. I also intended to meet with each of the representatives from each of the seven bargaining units in advance of that, to share that information with them so that they, they're privy to it. But our intent is not to introduce something as part of the budget that would significantly impact the benefit provided to employees. And if it would, then we would have that discussion with employees.
Well, I would just say that I have a lot of questions about how our health program works and why we are spending, you know, the money we are, but apparently the reduction was $180,000 reduction. That's good news, right? That's good news that we had $180,000 reduction in the medical expense. But if, just to give you an idea of what we're talking about here, if we budget $24 million for health insurance and we have only $21 million in health claims, where is that other money going? So that's a big ticket number. And I just, I'll just reiterate and be brief about it. I think we should have a work session on these health insurance and healthcare costs and how to, how to lower them.
Mr. Chair, could we reconvene this afternoon? Yeah, I think we're kind of at the point where we were getting ready to go into executive session. I think I've seen, heard from four commissioners that they're not interested in a separate work session on this. So I think the request for a work session dies based on the lack of interest. We're at the point where it was review of assignments. If we can get through that, we can, we can go straight into exec session. Our exec session may result in, and we may wait till 1:30 to go into exec session. That's what I want to ask the board, whether they want to go immediately into exec session. It's supposed to be at least a half hour or whether they want to come back this afternoon. Also, we, there may be need for us to come out in a public session after exec session. Can we, can we get through a review of assignments and at least recess?
That's fine.
Because I believe we only have, we have.
We're doing very well here.
Three public hearings and two future agenda items, I think, right? Or one, right, for assignments?
Yes. So I, would you like me to do that real quick, Mr. Chair? I heard we will follow up on, as Commissioner Farr had asked, making sure that we have postings of all applicable Department of Labor and Bully laws throughout our county facilities. And we'll also follow up, as several commissioners asked, on the RFP process for printing services. I'll give you an update next week on both of those items. And then we have the, the request, which I saw at least three head nods for on the River. River Road Parks District, discussion, joint work session there. And then Mr. Kyler will monitor the cigarette legislation. So those, those are all the items that I heard as additional assignments.
So I was having a hard time hearing a little bit of this. So are we going to break now and, and come back at 1:30?
That's, that was my next question for the board before I read us into exec session. Do we want to break for lunch, or do we want to go immediately into exec session and try and get it over with?
I, I would be in favor of breaking until 1:30.
If we are finished with our regular board meeting, I'd prefer to get the executive session taken care of, and then have the afternoon to continue with the work that I'm trying to catch up on.
Two weeks in DC puts you behind. Anybody else have a preference?
Sure, yeah.
Exec sessions?
Going to exec session.
Okay. All right, so at this time, the Board of County Commissioners will meet in executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations and to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. The executive session will be held pursuant to ORS 1926602D and H, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet in executive session for the purposes listed above. We reserve the right to come back in a public session should the need arise. So I'm going to recess us into executive session, and if we do not come back in a public session, I will adjourn us until next Tuesday at 9:00 PM. If not, we will come back in the public session. We are recessed. Mike, you want to look at calendars together real quick before I go upstairs?